The enforcement roles of gang injunctions. We hope to do three things, and I'll be just, I'll just give the headlines. Further community outreach by way of getting the message out to the public through our website and working with the city council and the ad hoc on that. Further training, we've already conducted since last year, 100, over 150 trainings. And the metaphor that we use is that it's like the Golden Gate Bridge in San Francisco. You start, training must be conducted continuously. You start at one end, and when you get to the other end of the paint job, you have to start again and retrain everyone to make sure that the process is working. And finally, we want to reach out to our partners in the city family as well as in the intervention and prevention fields so that they can help us sponsor the appropriate applicants for the gang injunction removal process. The general theory is this, and I'll be very brief. If there are, as law enforcement estimates, some 10,000 potential individuals who are within the safety zones and affiliated with gangs, then we are very certain that among that 10,000, there are going to be perhaps several thousand who could be good applicants for this process. And the question is going to be to target those people, to get the information of those people, and to help them through the process. And that will be something that will evolve over the next year and beyond.
Having further questions for Senior Assistant City Attorney Bruce Reardon, Mr. Cardenas asks about the number of applicants applying for removal.
When it comes to the gang injunction removal process, has anybody been removed in the process? And do we have more than one application so far beyond that one in the pipeline?
Yes, the final summary for the time being, and this we hope to have changed substantially over the next six months, for example. We have 20 applications now. We have one individual removed. We have another 19 applications. Of those 20 applications, for example, part of the process of learning has been 11 of those applications were people with pending cases. That is not ideal because the judicial process, the petition is not a substitute for the judicial process, it's a complement to. So the cases have to be resolved before the petition process can operate. But that has been the great benefit of the ad hoc committee and the city council connecting us with the public defenders so that we can work with them to find applicants who do not have pending cases. Or, in the case where people do have pending cases, they can resolve those cases and then proceed forward.
Saying suppression is not the only answer, District 5 Councilmember Jack Weiss commends the staff for what he sees as an innovative program.
And as folks at the table, Mr. Tremblay, Mr. Martinez, Mr. Reardon, what you're doing, it really is innovative, and it really is path breaking, and it really is charting a new course in this nation. And putting together your ideas and the ideas that Mr. Cardenas and his committee have generated, what you're really talking about is, when it comes to either gang injunctions or, as you were just discussing with me a few moments ago, misdemeanor prosecutions, you all believe in the criminal law, I believe in the criminal law, you put people in prison for a living, so why? But you need not be merely only prescriptive when you are drafting gang injunctions or sentences for individuals who are convicted of crimes. You can be prescriptive, you can try to point people in other directions, give people other opportunities in their lives. And by doing that, you and Mr. Cardenas are really recognizing that suppression is not the only answer. It's not the only viable answer. And it's an extraordinary thing here in 2009. This city, while it has a very, very, very strong suppression and law enforcement component to its anti-gang strategy, as it should, that is universally not considered to be the only prong of the strategy. And you all have forged that sea change together, and it's just very, very impressive, and I just wanted to acknowledge it. And obviously, and I don't think you're councilmember, I'd say that has been at the direction of our city attorney and the chief of our criminal division as well, and they have to equally share in that. The direction that we're going is the direction they have set.
Joining us now is Senior Assistant City Attorney and Director of Anti-Gang Operations for the City Attorney's Office, Bruce Reardon. Mr. Reardon, welcome to Council Week in Review.
Thank you, Jack, it's a pleasure to be here.
As I'm sure you've heard, Los Angeles has sometimes been referred to as the gang capital of the nation. How many gangs, how many gang members?
Los Angeles is often called the gang capital of the nation, and that's accurate. In a lot of ways, Los Angeles is known by experts in this country and beyond as the cradle or the birthplace of the modern gang problem. And by that, we mean, and I mean, that the modern gang, the modern street gang was really to a large degree born here in central Los Angeles, parts of south Los Angeles and northeast Los Angeles. We currently have, and these figures are provided to us by the Los Angeles Police Department as well as the Los Angeles County Sheriff's, we believe we have approximately 450 documented street gangs in the city of Los Angeles totaling an estimated number of approximately 39,000 gang members. Now, that number of 450 gangs has been fairly steady for some time now, although the number of gang members, the 39,000 number, has dropped dramatically in the last eight to 10 years and is down from a high of 60,000 10 years ago.
I'm sure a lot of people watching are thinking, wait a minute, what's the attraction? Why are so many young people drawn to the gang lifestyle? And girls as well, of course, doesn't it include them too?
It does, actually, more so now than ever before. I've been a prosecutor now for almost 20 years, and 20 years ago, women or girls weren't seen to any large degree in gangs. They are now. They absolutely now make up more than 10% of gang members or active participants in the gang life. The attraction is sometimes hard to put a tangible finger on, but we compare it, and many experts compare it, and I believe it's also accurate, to compare the gang lifestyle to an addiction, a psychological addiction, not a physical addiction. But it's very addictive, it can be attractive particularly to young people who have few other options in the neighborhoods where these gangs are concentrated. And it is a terrible mistake, of course, to join a gang, but oftentimes, young people, particularly at the age when they begin to be groomed by the gang, and that can be 10 to 14, 15, 16 years old, they're not thinking necessarily about their future. By the time they want to change, when they're either young adults or fully adults, it can be too late.
You say the number has been going down over the past eight, 10 years. Tell us about the gang injunction program. What does it do, and how long has it been around?
In Los Angeles, really, the Los Angeles City Attorney's Office, working together with the Los Angeles Police Department as our great partner, but also with the Los Angeles County District Attorney's Office and the sheriffs, have really pioneered in the state of California and now across the country, the concept of the civil gang injunction. It is a civil action filed in civil court that is then enforced in criminal court on an individual basis. In the city of Los Angeles, we now currently have 41 civil gang injunctions covering 66 gangs, because some of the gang injunctions are multiple gang, have multiple gangs under a single injunction. So we have 41 gang injunctions covering 66 gangs. And just to put those numbers in a little bit more perspective, they are estimated, those 41 gang injunctions each have a safety zone, a zone in which the injunction is enforced, called a safety zone. The rough square mileage, the estimated square mileage of those 41 safety zones is believed to be about 80 square miles. Our city is approximately 495 square miles. We believe, based on estimates, again, the best estimates that we have from Los Angeles Police and Los Angeles sheriffs, we believe that roughly 10,000 or one quarter of the city's 39,000 gang members are concentrated in those 41 safety zones or that 80 square mile, miles of territory. And as I say, that still leaves over 400 square miles of the city that are not impacted or where gang injunctions do not exist.
I remember when Jim Hahn was the city attorney and this idea of the gang injunction first came to my attention, I remember thinking at the time, how could this possibly be effective? Has it been effective?
Yes, it has. And Jim Hahn and his team at that time deserve a lot of the credit, as well as the LAPD. They really took a novel idea, took a novel approach to fighting gangs, which is an approach that is best distinguished by two things. One, the use of a civil remedy in civil court instead of a criminal remedy, or using the two together. That was novel. And the second novel aspect of the gang injunction was to take, with my experience with gangs, one of the biggest concerns is those 80 to 85% of the residents of any area where gangs operate, who are law abiding and are not in the gang, and are simply victims of the gang, or terrorized or intimidated by the gang, they can't testify in court out of fear. They're afraid, frankly, for their lives. What the gang injunction allows the government to do is to put the LAPD and LA City Attorney's Office or the District Attorney's Office, we step into the shoes of those victims. We go to court and make our presentation on their behalf. So that allows them a sense of freedom. They can provide information to the police, but it's the police who provide the information to the court, and the police who then take the risk, as we all know, our police do on a daily basis. There have been several studies, and to answer your question directly, Jack, the Los Angeles County Grand Jury as well as several university studies have looked at these gang injunctions since City Attorney Hahn brought them into being, and then City Attorney Delgado, who I work for, really took the idea and expanded it across the city. There have been several studies, most notably while City Attorney Delgado was in office and has been in office. And those studies have found generally that gang injunctions are effective, they can reduce crime and gang membership in an area where they are in place by 10% to 25%, in some areas as much as 50%. But even more so than those studies, we have the testimony of our partners at LAPD, Chief Bratton and his command staff, who are experts in the field, really believe in these things. And it's their belief in them that really helps us and supports us in pursuing them.
It's quite a comprehensive list, but remind us what some of the most important restrictions and prohibitions that gangs fall under when an injunction is in place?
A gang injunction is a court order. Like any other injunction, actually, it literally is derived from the kind of law that was developed, for instance, if a factory was in someone's neighborhood and was spewing pollution into a stream, and that stream was then polluting other people in the community, they would seek an injunction to have that process stopped. Similarly, we seek court orders, and under the direction of City Attorney Delgado, we seek court orders where ultimately the Los Angeles Superior Courts put together an order which, when the LAPD serves on individual gang members, that informs them of certain activities that are restricted. The service of the injunction is not itself punitive, that literally is just notice. And the notice typically falls under the following restrictions. The first and foremost, the one that has been the most useful, and at times controversial, has been a limitation or restriction on the right of gang members to associate in public, in public spaces like parks, where gangs have been well-known from as long as I can remember, to take over and drive everyone else out of streets and other public places. Now, there are other restrictions, for example, but most of the other major restrictions are already criminal activities such as the use of graffiti tools, or possessing narcotics, or possessing small arms or knives. But the primary restriction that gang injunctions have made effective is it allows the police to break up the association of gangs in public places. And it's been my experience, and certainly the experience of the City Attorney's Office, that it's that association which causes such fear and intimidation in the neighborhoods where gangs operate.
To jump ahead a little bit, of course, you've also got something that is now being called, I think, the removal process. What does it take for a former gang member to qualify for removal from the list of people in gangs?
Thank you for asking about that, Jack, because we very much appreciate the public notice that this media opportunity provides. This is something that at the direction of City Attorney Delgado, who has expanded the gang injunction program from, I believe, eight injunctions when City Attorney Hahn left office to now the 41 that we have. City Attorney Delgado, working with city council, and specifically with councilmembers Cardenas and Hahn and several others, has developed with LAPD a process called the removal petition. And we have literally created petitions, both in English and Spanish, put them up on our website, distributed them across the city, which provide, and the best way I can put it is this, the injunction, when they are finally court ordered, are permanent, and they put a permanent restriction on gangs. We've also found over the last 20 to 40, even longer, 20 to 40 years, that some gangs are virtually permanent in the neighborhoods in which they're entrenched. What the gang removal petition process acknowledges is that some young men and women have drifted away and left the gang life, they've moved on with their lives, as one expert says. Acknowledging that, we've created a petition process whereby those young adults who've moved on with their lives and left the gang life can establish to both the city attorney and the LAPD that they have done so. And then the city attorney and the LAPD will agree that that individual has left the gang, and therefore the gang injunction is no longer enforceable against that individual.
Over the past year, I don't think there's been exactly an avalanche of people rushing in to take advantage of this opportunity. Why do you suppose that is?
That's a very good question, Jack. I mean, this is something totally new. As Councilmember Cardenas has said to City Attorney Delgado, and it's been a remark that we have taken under advisement very seriously, is this wasn't a reinvention of the wheel, this was an invention of the wheel. No one's done this before. So in the process of doing it, we've also learned that, like City Attorney Delgado often says, everything in government requires a form. So we had to create a form, then we had to create a form in Spanish. All this took time. The next step, and this is the phase where we're at now, is the application phase. We've had 20 applications, and we've had one granted the last year in 2008. It's all kept confidential for both privacy reasons, but also security reasons. We don't want the individuals to be publicly identified so that they're safe and their privacy is secure. But we want more than 20 applications. It's an absolute goal of City Attorney Delgado, of the mayor and the city council, as well as the LAPD, and it's certainly my goal to execute this. We want to take that 20 and make it 200 someday, as many as 2,000. And that process is getting the word out, outreach and training.
In a moment, we'll get to how people can actually take advantage of that, but before, we're running completely out of time. During your report to council, you mentioned training several times. Who's getting the training and what are they learning?
At the City Attorney's Office, we now have done approximately 150 trainings since we started the petition. The training began with the LAPD, because if the police don't, you know, have really expert understanding of this process, the process won't work. We've then expanded the training to the city family, including the mayor's office and other parts of the city services that interact with gangs, for example, intervention and prevention workers. And that was a big step forward. Those of us in law enforcement, just a couple of years ago, didn't really work hand in hand, or even at all, with the people in the intervention and prevention services. But as those services have become more professionalized, they've stopped our training and we've provided it.
Somebody watching this program who wants to get out of the gang life, or perhaps has a relative or a friend who wants to, who should they contact? How do they start the process going?
Thank you, Jack, thanks for asking that. There are several different ways, but the two best ones, we'll start with a phone number at the Los Angeles City Attorney's Office that we have dedicated, that City Attorney Delgado has dedicated to information on this subject. And that phone number is 213-978-7192, 213-978-7192. Also, at the direction of City Attorney Delgado, we have revamped the Los Angeles City Attorney's Website. And that website is at www.lacity.org/aty, attorney. And that website has, under gangs and fighting gangs, an entire array of petition-related materials, including the petition. Finally, if you don't want to use those two sources, go to your local city council office, they'll get in touch with us, and we'll get it to them. Or go to the LAPD, and they'll get in touch with us, and we'll get you a petition.
Very good. And of course, there's always 311, your one call to City Hall. Bruce Reardon from the City Attorney's Office, thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Thank you, Jack, thanks a lot.
The committee report was submitted for information only, and no council action was required. Your Los Angeles City Council will be in recess until March 19th, 2009, so that members can attend the National League of Cities Conference in Washington, DC. The next regular council meeting will be on Friday, March 20th, at 10 a.m. We invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall, or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. And beginning Wednesday, March 25th, those of you living in the Harbor area can go to the San Pedro City Hall, located at 638 South Beacon Street, room 700 in San Pedro, and also participate in council meetings via video teleconferencing. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending March 13th, 2009. On behalf of Tom Kuhara and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
Need a recycling center? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
Your city, your channel.
...
...
...
Good morning. Thank you to Councilmembers Alacon, Cardenas, and Perry, Weiss, and Zine. We've asked that Councilmembers Hahn, Parks, Mr. Smith, as well, and Mr. Weston, to make their way down to the council chambers. Today is a Friday where we normally have special presentations. And... Good morning again. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. It is Friday, March 20th, 2009. A thank you to Councilmember Alakon Cardenas, Weesar Labanj, Perry, Weiss, and Zain. We've asked that Councilmembers Han Parks, Mr. Smith as well, and Mr. Weston to make their way down to the council chambers. Today is a Friday where we normally have special presentations. And council meets Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays at 10 o'clock. The first Friday of the month, we are in the Van Nuys City Hall. I would like to introduce our first presenter today, Councilmember Tony Cardenas.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask all the members of the Persian community who are going to be part of the presentation to please come forward. How are you doing? Good to see you. Good morning.
Good morning again. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. It is Friday, March 20th, 2009. A thank you to Councilmember Alakon Cardenas, Weesar Labanj, Perry, Weiss, and Zain. We've asked that Councilmembers Han Parks, Mr. Smith as well, and Mr. Weston to make their way down to the council chambers. Today is a Friday where we normally have special presentations. And council meets Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays at 10 o'clock. The first Friday of the month, we are in the Van Nuys City Hall. I would like to introduce our first presenter today, Councilmember Tony Cardenas.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask all the members of the Persian community who are going to be part of the presentation to please come forward. How are you doing? Good to see you. Good morning. Thank you very much. For the sixth year in a row, I am honored to join my colleagues and friends in this great chamber and across this wonderful city in recognizing and announcing of the spring with No Ruz, the Persian New Year. First, I would like to ask that all Persian city employees to please stand and be recognized. They're with ITA, LAWA, DDP, DOT, Public Works, and many, many departments. The Persian community, the Iranian community, is the most educated immigrant community to the United States to this day, and they should be very, very proud of that. More people come from Iran with bachelor's degrees, master's degrees, doctorate degrees, and it warms my heart to know that many, many of them are engineers just like me. The most recent estimate is there are over 300 Iranian-Americans that work in various professional capacities such as engineers, information technology professionals, managers, and in the city of Los Angeles family as a whole. There are four general managers, one with Building and Safety, Department of Water and Power, Bureau of Street Lighting, and Los Angeles Convention Center, and a few assistant general managers of Iranian heritage that serve in the city as well. Interestingly, the diversity in their ethnic and religious background, Baha'i, Jewish, Armenian, and Muslim, and many others, well represents a strength in diversity within the Persian community as well. The majority of the Iranian-Americans in the city are engineers, with the greatest concentration in Public Works, Department of Water and Power, Department of Transportation, and Building and Safety. The city of Los Angeles is the largest single non-Iranian employer of Iranian professionals outside of Iran. Many of the Iranian-Americans in the city entered civil service with the city and have proudly served this great city and her residents for over two decades. Through the No Ruz celebration, the Persian-American community brings hundreds of years of rich culture, history, and tradition to the city of Los Angeles. No Ruz proclaims spring as a time of rejuvenation of nature, rekindling of friendships, and bringing about hope for a brighter future for all. It is truly a time of celebration and strengthening of our common resolve to be better and to do better. Along with the celebration of No Ruz each year, the Persian-American community of Los Angeles reaches out to all of our diverse communities and contributes to forming citywide relationships and bonds that truly makes Los Angeles special and unique. The Persian community continues to contribute immensely to the entire city of Los Angeles and beyond. May we all be blessed in the coming year with the gift of love, peace, and may all Angelinos find success and prosperity in the new Persian New Year. Best wishes to all, and happy No Ruz. No Ruz. Mubarak. I now would like to give an opportunity to some of the leaders within the city family and the Persian community to please come forward and say a few words. First, I'd like to ask Andrew Edelman, our Director of the Department of Building and Safety, to please come forward. Here you are. Okay, Andrew.
Thank you. On behalf of Persian community, I would like to thank the City Council and City of Los Angeles for recognizing first day of spring at No Ruz. Persians are a very diverse community. There are Muslims, there are Jews, there are Baha'is, there are Christians, there are Zoroastrians, and many others. We have lived together for over 3,000 years in peace and prosperity. As a matter of fact, over 2,500 years ago Cyrus the Great made the first declaration of human rights that declared rights for all the humans of all races and all national origins and all beliefs. And later today, you will be hearing a request from Mr. Delajani on that regard, and I ask for your special attention to that. Again, we have had the opportunity to benefit from this great country and serve this great country. This year, in the view of economic conditions, rather than serving lunch to all the attendees and all the city employees, we have contributed 2,000 meals to the homeless people in Los Angeles in recognition of the economic condition in the city. Again, Aide shomom mubarak. Happy No Ruz.
Thank you. And Mr. Cardenas, before we go on, we do have a few councilmembers like to make remarks. Councilmember Labanj, followed by Mr. Weesar and Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas. Thank you for your leadership here. Give Mr. Cardenas a hand for bringing this event down and his staff. It's so important. And to the teams up there, including the Vice Mayor of Beverly Hills, it's good to see you as well, and the young people. This is what our city is all about. It's about all of us. And every day, there's a special day for somebody. A few days ago, with St. Patrick. Today, and the Irish. Today, it's for the Iranian community, which is so important. Hard work gets us everywhere. What Mr. Carter said about education is so important. The driving force for change is education. And I'm talking to my wife, Bridgette, this morning. We talked about education, and I talked to her about public schools and public support. We have to care about that. We have to care about things that are in our community in such a way as we all integrate and we work. I'm very proud of each one of the general managers who are here. Andrew, who I've known the longest in his efforts, former appointee of then-Mayor Richard Ridden, now under Mayor Vierigosa. Each and every, the transition is taking place at the Convention Center. And when you go to the Convention Center, it is almost like going to a theater. There's some different show in every hall, which is so important. And thank you, David, for the power and the light and the water that we drink. Give our general managers and the city employees a big hand. God bless you. Happy No Ruz. Pretty smile.
Yes, Mr. Weesar.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Happy No Ruz, and it's wonderful to see these beautiful young women in front there wearing these beautiful costumes. Each and every year, I look forward to seeing them because they really light up this room. And congratulations to all the Persian community. We have three general managers here in leadership positions that are running and helping to make the city of Los Angeles the great city it is. And it shows the participation and involvement that the Persian community has had here for many years. I particularly want to thank someone who I call my history teacher, Mr. Ezzat Delajani, who I've sat down with many times, and he's told me about the Persian. Let's give him a big round of applause. He's really educated me about the Persian community, its history, its culture, and the proud traditions it has. So thank you very much, and congratulations, Mr. Delajani. I know the Central City Association is honoring you this year, April 9th, with the Heart of the City Award. A wonderful award given out each and every year. Really well deserved. And to all the community here, I say happy No Ruz, and it's great to live in such a rich ethnically diverse city like we have here in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'd also like to say to Mr. Delajani and the Delajani family that I think it's wonderful that CCA has chosen to honor such an elder and a great patriarch of the community and to recognize your accomplishments and your contributions to the entire city of Los Angeles. And I also want to say a very, very special thank you. Celebration of No Ruz is always so beautiful and also very educational. But the fact that you have chosen to honor the Midnight Mission and provide support to the meals that are so desperately needed in a time when contributions have fallen precipitously to nonprofits who do not rely on government support. They are entirely funded by private donations and private philanthropic support. And so I want to say a deep heartfelt thank you for supporting the Midnight Mission too in your celebration. It means a great deal beyond the walls of this building and to people who may not even know what No Ruz is, but I can tell you, I have great gratitude for your support of people who often have no voice. Thank you very much, and happy No Ruz.
Mr. Zain. Mr. Zain.
Thank you, and good morning to our audience. It's always great to see the community turn out in great numbers. Last year, I remember, it was St. Patty's Day, followed by No Ruz, the same day. Celebrated both. This year, we separate by a couple of days, but we are one in this country, in this city, in this great city. And to see Jimmy, the former mayor, the current vice mayor, next year, the council member, but a leader in the city of Beverly Hills, our neighboring community, and to all the folks that are here for this wonderful celebration we annually honor and recognize. And Tony Cardenas, you don't only recognize this, but you recognize the death in our community. You have that event in Woodley Park. You reach out to all of Los Angeles and always embrace people. This is an example of what you're doing with this today. So I want to congratulate Councilmember Tony Cardenas for making this happen year after year. And for all of you here, welcome to City Hall, and we look forward to the wonderful delicacies that we will dine on, because when you come, you come with great food, abundance of food, every year. It's a wonderful event. And to all the city folks that are here, from Building and Safety, Convention Center, and wherever the department, thank you for all you do for the people of Los Angeles. God bless you and many, many happy years. No Ruz. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. I want to add my congratulations in how proud we are to have so many representatives in the city of Los Angeles and the Persian community, and how this event continues to grow every single year and your leadership on that, Mr. Cardenas. And also to Mr. Delajani, thank you for what you have done for this community civically as well as the Persian community. So happy that the Treasures also is going to be honoring you, but you and your entire family have been an integral part of the city of Los Angeles. So thank you, and happy No Ruz, and we look forward to the festival. And with that, Mr. Cardenas, you can continue with another others that you're going to acknowledge as well.
Thank you very much. Next, I'd like to ask David Nahai, a man that I told him he was crazy to take on the job of being the head of the Department of Water and Power, but that was, I was saying that in the best way possible, meaning that you have to be a very strong-willed individual. You have to give yourself 110% in order to do that job, and he's done a wonderful job. Ladies and gentlemen, David Nahai, our General Manager of Department of Water and Power.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Cardenas, for everything that you've done for our community and for leading the effort to recognize No Ruz in the city of Los Angeles. The council member just said that I must have been crazy to take this position. Let me say this. I wake up every morning and I consider it a privilege to come to work for this city. And I know that all of my fellow Iranian-Americans who serve the city of Los Angeles feel the same way. It truly is a privilege, and it's a privilege day in, day out, to be able to do this work that we do for the city. But I wanted to also take a moment to thank the city council. I think it's easy in the press of daily business to forget what it is that the city of Los Angeles stands for, to forget the beacon that it is to the world. And this is the image of Los Angeles that you preside over. And what Los Angeles says to the world, and it's a message that I think resonates particularly today as we celebrate No Ruz, a new day, what it says to the world is that human beings of all colors and cultures and creeds and beliefs can live together in one place and can prosper together and can live together in harmony. That is a message that has to be taken to the world. This city stands for that message and for that beacon for others to follow. And if you take a look at the ideals of No Ruz, they are exactly compassion and tolerance and a new day so that we shake off the darkness of winter and embrace the new warmth of spring. And this is exactly what Los Angeles stands for. It is exactly what people come to LA for, for a rebirth, for a new day, for No Ruz. So thank you all very, very much.
Thank you, David. Before I invite Ezzad Delajani to say a few words, I'd like to ask Carol Schatz, the head of the CCA, to come forward so she can mention a tradition that the CCA has and the coming together of honoring of a person from the Persian community. And that's just another example of the involvement of the people standing with me and the people standing in this room and serving our community so well. So with that, Carol Schatz.
Thank you, Councilmember Cardenas. It is a great pleasure, privilege, and honor to be standing here next to Ezzad Delajani, who is this year's Central City Association's Heart of the City Honoree. That is an honor we give to someone who has done an extraordinary amount of work in revitalizing downtown Los Angeles. It was an award we created in honor of former Mayor Tom Bradley, who is a dear friend of yours. This is the first time that our 85-year-old business organization, one of the major business organizations in Los Angeles, is honoring someone of Persian descent, a very important businessman in his own right and investor. We encourage all of you, April 9th, at noon at the Bonaventure. My staff, raise your hands, has invitations and forms. We would like to see as many of you there as possible. And congratulations to Mr. Delajani. And I also want to thank my Persian members of CCA, of which I have many, who have done such a great job in revitalizing downtown Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, Mr. Ezzad Delajani.
Honorable Mayor Antony Belagrosa, honorable city council members, distinguished guests, it is my great pleasure and honor to be among you today on this special day. It is a great honor for the Iranian-American community to witness the city of Los Angeles celebrate the Persian New Year, No Ruz. I am on behalf of the Iranian-American community to really appreciate this outstanding recognition. No Ruz is the beginning of spring, the beginning of new life and new hope. No Ruz is the day that nature is reborn. Peace and celebration is communicated all over the world. No Ruz is celebrated in many farcey-speaking countries, some of the countries that are ancient historic, observe and celebrate the first of spring. I would like to take this opportunity to wish a very happy No Ruz to all those around the world who celebrate the first day of spring as a natural beginning of life. As may you know, about 2,500 years ago, Cyrus the Great of Persia declared the first charter of human rights. It is a intait vorsie to being referred in as a great. They gave freedom to all people in his empire regardless of their race, religion, creed, or color. In fact, he is repeatedly mentioned in the Torah as a savior of humanity. For exercising his power with justice and equality today, today this is charter known as a Cyrus Cylinder, rest at the British Museum in London. Dear Mayor Belagrosa, dear council members, in honor of great men who declared the first human rights charter over 2,500 years ago, I would like to request the city to approve and erect a statue of Cyrus the Great in downtown Los Angeles. and erect a statue of Cyrus the Great in downtown Los Angeles at Pershing Square.
Yes.
This statue will be symbol of freedom and respect for human right. I would not like to impose a financial burden on the city with my request, especially given the current economic situation. Therefore, I would like to take financial responsibility for this project. I wish everyone health, happiness, and peace in the new year. Happy New Year, Happy Nooruz. هم وطن عزیز در سراسر جهان عید نوروز رو به همه شما تبریک عرض می کنن. امیدوارم که سال نوروز، سال سلامتی، سال سول، رفاه برای تمام مردم جهان بخصوص هم وطن عزیز باشه. امروز من در شهر لوسانجلس، در برابر کنسولهای لوسانجلس، از شردار مخترم لوسانجلس و کنسولها تغذى کردم که مجسمه مرد بزرگ، کروش بزرگ به خاطر اینکه اولین علامه حوض به شهر را ساده کرده است در بزرگترین میدان شهر لوسانجلس نصب شود. برای همه آرزوع سلامتی موفقیت دارم. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Cardenas, before we continue, Mr. Weiss would also like to say, make a comment. Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, thank you, Council President, Mr. De La Jani and Mr. Cardenas. I also just want to add my voice and say happy Nooruz. It's always a pleasure to see both of you here, Mr. De La Jani, representing and leading the community, and Mr. Cardenas, the fact that you have decided that this is something that means a lot to you, that you want to make sure the city commemorates every year. We're only here because you have taken it upon yourself to do that. Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas and Mr. De La Jani. And I just want to say, عيد الشمار مبارك.
Thank you. I think it's appropriate, we have someone who would like to recognize the leaders and the Nooruz community, Orlando Ward, who runs the Midnight Mission.
Thank you, Councilmember Cardenas, and congratulations, Mr. De La Jani. My friends on the council, I just want to underscore something that was said so well by Councilmember Perry. These are a time, we're in a time now with our economic condition, with the needs of our most needy people growing daily, to see a group like this pivot and understand how important they are to the fabric of this community is something to behold, is something to set as an example of the strength we have here in Los Angeles and the strength of our diversity and how important it is during these times for us to come together to help those that may not be able to help themselves. So, honor to all of you for that recognition always, and happy Nooruz.
Thank you, Orlando. Next, I'd like to ask another one of our department heads over the convention center, someone who grew to rise to that position and is doing a wonderful job, Perea Abasi.
Honorable members of the city council, colleagues and friends, thank you. Thank you for allowing us to bring the message of Nooruz signaling the beginning of spring to this great hall and to this most wonderful of cities. At a time of great peril, at a time of great uncertainty and a time ripe with anticipation and anxiety in our nation and our city, Nooruz reminds all of us of the most essential and powerful of our links, the link that binds all of us to nature. Thus at this time, and more than ever, we are reminded of how nature has triumphed for millions of years with blossoming of hope, the coming of spring, and the rebirth of earth. May the benevolence of Nooruz bring love to our hearts. May we be mindful of those who are less fortunate. May the tranquility of Nooruz bring calm to our nation, and may we all do our part to make this city a greater bastion in welcoming people of all cultures. I wish you much health, prosperity, and good fortune. And again, on behalf of the Persian community, request your consideration of Mr. De La Jani's request for the erection of the Cyrus the Great statue in Pershing Square. If I may, Council President, say a few words in Farsi as the program is being broadcast worldwide. از جانبه شهر لوسانجلس، شهر ودن شهر لوسانجلس، Nooruz باستانی را به تمامی پارسیان در سراسر جهان تبریک گفت. آرزوع سالی پر از سول، صفا، آشتی و اشرا برای همه مردمان داریم. متشکر هم Nooruz پیروز.
Also, once again, for the sixth annual Nooruz celebration, which will happen again at Balboa Park in Van Nuys in my district, on Sunday, April 5th, not this Sunday, but Sunday, April 5th, and the event will begin at 9:00 a.m. and will go on all day. It's an event that attracts anywhere between 20,000 to 30,000 individuals without incident. It's a wonderful celebration in order to learn about the culture and also to learn about yourselves when you come and go. Also, Madam President, I know that we've taken a bit of time, but those of you who have served with me know that I can't leave a podium without speaking a little bit off script. And I just want to tell you something that I was reminded of as I looked up at the screen up here and it shows us talking, and I said to myself, wow, I'm dark. I kind of forget that sometimes. But it reminded me of why we're standing here. And it reminds me of two simple, quick stories. And one is, my son, who's of my four children, he's as dark as I am, and he was about four years old, and he was playing and he scraped his skin, and he scraped a couple layers of skin off of him. And I was up in Sacramento working, my wife told me the story later on, and he was about four years old, and he was upset. And she was like, why are you crying? And then he's, does it hurt? And she says, no, it doesn't hurt. And he said, I'm not going to be dark like daddy. And it touched me because in this country, unfortunately, because of the ignorance and what befalls upon us and the things that happen, sometimes, sometimes, we get in a weak moment and we think that we want to be somebody else, that it's not good enough to be who we are. And the reason why we're standing here is because Amir and Perea came to my office and they wouldn't give up because they had asked the city of Los Angeles to have a celebration just like this, and they were told no, more than once. Not by me, but by other people in the city of Los Angeles. And I said yes to honoring them in the celebration, and then I looked at them because they had a funny look on their face, and I know them, they're my friends. I said, what's wrong with you guys? Why are you looking like that? And they finally confided in me that this was not the first time that they asked to have this celebration. So it reminds me of sometimes the ugliness in society where we stigmatize people and we try to make them feel as though if you don't look like this or you don't talk like that, then maybe you ought to try being somebody else. And today's celebration, as I said earlier, Nooruz is about wishing peace and love upon all, not just upon the Iranian community. And it's unfortunate that even to this day, some people just can't see that. But today, we celebrate, today we rejoice, and today we say, you know what? You are who you are, I am who I am, and let's celebrate together and let's love each other and rejoice together 110%. So with that, it's with great honor that I give this resolution on behalf of the city of Los Angeles to the Persian community, the Iranian community on the celebration of Nooruz. And this celebration is as much as beautiful as these wonderful little girls who are celebrating their culture and who get dressed every single year and put on their beautiful smiles and say, look at me. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good.
And for all of those who are attending and don't have to listen to other things that are going on in the chambers, they're going to have a celebration in the rotunda. Not the abundance of food like we normally have, that is going to the Midnight Mission, but they will have some goodies and tea for everyone to celebrate. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alokun, Cardenas, Grohan, Wizar Labanj, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosamell Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zain, Garcetti, 12 members present and a quorum, Madam President.
First item of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Be approved. Mr. Smith moves, Mr. Wesson seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Those will be approved.
Madam President, before beginning the regular agenda, there's been a request to continue several of the items.
Okay.
Item number nine, request to continue that matter to March 31st.
That will be continued to March 31st.
Item number 15, request to continue that matter for 30 days, and that would be April 21st.
That will be continued.
Next one is item number 20, and the request to continue that matter to March 27th.
Will be continued to March 27th.
Number 31, request to continue that to Wednesday, March 25th.
That will be continued to March 25th.
And number 32, request to continue that to April 21st.
April 21st, okay.
And on the regular agenda, items 1 through 14 are items for which public hearings have been held, and I believe Mr. Zain has a request on item number one.
Yes, Mr. Zain.
Should we wait a moment so we can get some quiet in the chamber? Thank you, Madam President. On item number one, there's been a request to continue it for one week, but I think we should continue it for a minimum of two weeks. And they need to get back to UFLAC and they need to get back to SEIU, EAA, they need to get back to the folks that allegedly signed off on this parking agreement, which I'm being informed, they haven't all agreed to it. And it's been to committee, it's been discussed, but my recommendation would be give it two weeks, but have the city go back to the group and make sure that they all agree to it because there are folks that are approaching me now that they're saying they never approved it. So I'd give them two weeks to get it resolved. Hopefully, we can have it done at that time.
Thank you, I would agree. Mr. Zain, Mr. Parks?
Just ask that we hold tight on that two weeks because we're losing about 40,000 a month as relates to revenue coming into the general fund, and they've worked for over a year on this agreement. And it's something in which joint labor management agreement, and they've come to a conclusion, they followed all the bylaws. The city attorney tells us we have no other options other than to go forward on it, and we have one department whose leadership was supportive of it before the change in elections, but now they're not supportive of it, but they're part of a larger group. So, the shorter the time, the better for everybody that's helping.
We'll stick by the two weeks. Mr. Zain.
Mr. Parks, thank you for that. In addition to the UFLAC that have approached, SEIU and also EAA have approached, and there's also disagreement. So, it's broader than what I originally thought, the UFLAC disagreement. That's why I'm saying two weeks, and hopefully, we can get it resolved by that time.
Thank you. It'll be continued two weeks.
And that would be April 3rd.
April 3rd, thank you. Next items?
That means before council, items 2 through 14.
Anyone wish to call items 2 through 14 special, and then we'll be going with Ms. Perry in a moment. Any specials colleagues, 2 through 14? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. I'm sorry, Mr. Parks?
Approve both reports on number three.
Okay, we'll approve both reports on item number three. Not Madam Clerk, then please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Items 2 and 5 will go forth with. Thank you.
Next items, Madam President, are items 16 through 33, and those are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
We do have a card on item 24 and 19, 19, 24, and 26 are cards. Are there specials? Yes. Okay. I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Yes. Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other specials colleagues other than 19, 24, and 26 which have cards? Not Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the remaining items, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Thank you. Next items?
That would conclude the regular agenda.
Thank you. We'll now go back to our presentations.
I'm sorry, Madam President, on item number 25, there is a substitute motion that was in the process and it hasn't been distributed yet. Do we consider that? Yes.
We consider item number 25, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes?
12 ayes.
Thank you. That'll be reconsidered and held for an amending motion. Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Perry, for your patience.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and I'd like to ask Reverend George Matzobayashi and his friends and family to join me here at the podium, all friends, all family members. Where's Dean? Tell Dean to come on up. There you are. How are you? It's unbelievable. Second grade, huh? Oh, third grade, oh my goodness. And when I'm done, I want you to introduce everybody. I, yes, starting with your wife. I am joined here today by Reverend George Matzobayashi and his wife, Mrs. Matzobayashi, and he's going to introduce everyone today. And I am really proud to recognize this extraordinary individual who is the former Rimbam of the Los Angeles Betsueen Buddhist Temple. Reverend Matzobayashi retired on January 31st, 2009 after an astonishing 48 years and seven months of sound devotion and sincere dedication to his vocation. I wanted to take this time to wish him well and to honor him for his incredible work. Reverend Matzobayashi was first appointed a minister to the Honolulu Betsueen Buddhist Temple in Hawaii on July 15th, 1960, and in 1963. He was given permission to enroll in the University of Wisconsin doctoral program in Buddhist studies, and in 1964, he transferred to UCLA's doctoral program in Asian languages. Beginning in January 1965, in addition to his studies, Reverend Matzobayashi began teaching Buddha Dharma to young members of the Venice Hengwanji Buddhist Temple, then a branch of the Los Angeles Betsueen Buddhist Temple. On April 1st, 1999, after 34 years of ministering to the members of the Venice Hengwanji Buddhist Temple, Reverend Matzobayashi was appointed the eighth Rimbam Head Minister of the Los Angeles Betsueen Buddhist Temple, and in that same year, land was purchased to expand the Betsueen structure. In early 2008, Rimbam Matzobayashi expressed his desire to retire after many years of service to the VCA, and during March of last year, Rimbam Matzobayashi officially requested the Los Angeles Betsueen Buddhist Temple Board of Directors to accept his request to retire. With a tinge of sadness and yet with great gratitude for his dedicated service, the board approved Rimbam Matzobayashi's request. His retirement celebration was held earlier this year, and I was able to attend, and it was an incredible and overwhelming display of love, affection, gratitude, and appreciation, and joy in celebrating Rimbam's magnificent career. I want to thank him for all of his contributions he has made to our shared communities, and his hard work, his dedication, his devotion to our city has set an extraordinary example for all people of Los Angeles to follow. And I want to say best wishes in your retirement, and I would ask you, since you have such a large gathering of support here for you today, if you would introduce us to each one of your friends and family, beginning with Mrs. Matzobayashi. Thank you, Rimbam.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, honorable lady, Council Lady, Ms. Jean Perry, and honorable members of the city of great, the city of Los Angeles, for giving me this wonderful, a moment that I will never, never forget until I go to next life. I was born on the big island of Hawaii, which was a territory of the United States of America, where my father, mother started the ministry. And my father were taken into the concentration camp during the break of the World War II. My wife, Kyoko Kei, was born in a concentration camp called Tula Lake Camp. But after all these years of hardship and hard work from everybody, we are so, so fortunate that I can really feel that Los Angeles is my home, ancestry home, for four generations now, and continue to call this as the great city, Los Angeles. The Council Lady, Honorable Jean Perry, truly helped us, not only the little Tokyo community area, but brought our little ethnic group into the major, major part of Los Angeles, and we are no longer called as the extension of Japan. A part of the great city called City of Los Angeles. Angeles, the city embraces all, and I am truly, truly grateful and honored to be a citizen of this great, great city. And I hope that our generation to come continue to feel grateful for all the wonderful, wonderful embracement and guidance that City of Los Angeles provide for all the citizens of this country. I'd like to, at this time, introduce my wife, who was born in Tula Lake Camp, but she is the United States of America, born and raised in America. I was raised in Japan, so my language is the English, is my second language. Kei Kyoko Matsubayashi. And my son, who is also giving such a wonderful, wonderful guidance from the City Council Lady, Jean Lady, my son, number 2 son, Dean Matsubayashi. And I was the 8th Head Minister of the Los Angeles Buddhist Temple with 108 years of history, but after me, we are so, so grateful that we have the 9th Rinbam Head Minister, Rinbam Hiroshi Abiko here with us. And also, sorry, I'm going to finish quickly. Also fellow minister, Reverend Kojo Hakihara, coming from Japan, but so enjoying working in the great city of Los Angeles. And our temple board, the representative, Mr. Ernest Hida, was a past president of the Los Angeles Buddhist Temple, and also the common advisor, Mr. Tom Maehara. And also, I have the one sister indoor, the Pauline Griffith, who was the teacher at the Council demand, the Council Honorable Fuza, when he was little, young, young. Sorry. These are the family, and many, many more friends would like to came, to come to attend this honorable day for all of my family, but I'd like to say thank you, together with all of us, for this wonderful, wonderful day to remember and have this honor and privilege. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Perry, Mr. Weisar would like to add some comments.
Thank you very much, and congratulations, Reverend. Thank you all for being here so, so much. I know that you are not only a place that you provide, a place of worship for your congregation, but also a very active congregation. I know we work together along with Ms. Perry's office on making sure we beautify the local community and we make it safer for all of us, so we appreciate your hard work, and not only the service you provide for your own congregation, but for the whole community. And thank you to my third grade teacher who's back there, you did wonders for me, and this young immigrant boy who arrived here as a young man, and we appreciate not only you, Ms. Griffith, but all teachers who do wonderful work for our students. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Labange?
He's so special, as you pointed to, everyone who is so special in yours. I hope you enjoy the next chapter as much as you enjoy giving great ministry to everybody. Arigato.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Thank you, Ms. Perry. Like to now, excuse me, recognize Mr. Weisar for our next presentation.
One more.
Oh, I'm sorry, they had you at the end for the next one. Okay, we'll go ahead with both. Mr. Weisar, we're going to have, she's going to do her second presentation now.
I'm pinch hitting, I believe, for Mr. Garcetti, and Mr. Reyes was going to join us, and this is for Aztec Rising. I'm the fill-in. I'm no air, but you know, I'll do it. Come close, you can do it on TV. Okay. Please. Take your tabs, it's better for the picture. Stick it on the back of your coat leg, yeah.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and I am pinch hitting today for our Council President, Mr. Garcetti. Later today, certificates will be handed out to 50 cadets who are currently enrolled in a very rigorous training program so that they can qualify to become professional firefighters. Dozens of young men and women who have completed this program in years past are now professional firefighters. Many of these individuals have come a very long way in their lives and have faced personal challenges along the way before joining the Aztec Fire Fuels Crew. Today, we honor them all, and I'd like to commend Jose Luis Perez and his team for administering this program. And in a moment, I'm going to invite Executive Director Enrique Portado to say a few words. Last week, last year, Enrique was honored by Hallmark Channel's Hero Program by Regis Philbin for his dedication to creating the Aztecs Rising Program in 1992. The city continues its efforts to fund economic development programs that offer employment to individuals in conjunction with the Aztec's program. For the city, they do clearing and fire prevention maintenance work on abandoned and neglected properties. When fire season arrives, in earnest, we will all be very, very appreciative of the work that you do. And so with that, I would like to present this certificate on behalf of Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Reyes, and the mayor, to Mr. Portado, and to say thank you from all of us, the entire city council. Take a little smile. And then to ask him to come to the podium.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
And Ms., before we get there, a couple council members that would also like to comment. Ms. Han, followed by Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, I just always want to stand and give a big shout out to Aztec Rising, Enrique, for the work that you do. You know, I have been, from the very first time I heard of what you do, I believed that what you were doing was really taking young people, many of them who are at risk of doing other things, of taking another path in their life, and you give them the training, the discipline, the tough love, the attention, but more importantly, I think you give them hope. You give them hope that if you play by the rules, if you work hard, if you focus, if you have a dream, that you can achieve it. And I know for a fact that all of you who are standing here today are really the type of people that we want in our fire department. We want you to have a life, to have a career that ultimately saves, saves lives. But, you know, Aztec Rising was one of the organizations that I talked about when we were trying to pass Measure A last November, and that was a measure where we almost won, and it would have raised about $30 million to fund programs like Aztec's Rising, to keep kids from joining gangs in the first place. And when I told people about your group, and I told them what they were doing, they said yes. I'm willing to tax myself $3 a month if we could fund organizations like Aztec's Rising, because I know that that really does make a difference in keeping kids out of gangs. So we're going to try that again, because I know you could do more if you had more money. So congratulations. I'm your biggest fan.
Thank you. Mr. Labange?
Thank you very much. I want to salute you all, again, on behalf of Eric Garcetti and Ed Reyes and Jan, thank you for pinch hitting here. I see many of you early in the morning in Griffith Park. I know you contributed when we had our fire in May of 2007, and I'm proud to each and every young person, young boy, and young girl, young man, and young woman, as we develop in our roles to make a contribution to the community. And whatever your future is, the strength that you got from this organization will only make it better for you to contribute in a higher way. So I'm proud. They always beat me up the hill, Jan, and they beat me back down the hill, but it's great to see you all here. Thank you for what you do. Work safe out there, and I thank you.
Thank you. Now it's your turn to speak. Thank you to all the gentlemen who are here today and what you do for this city, and clearly, you're a great asset to all of us. So with that, you're...
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Council President Eric Garcetti, Janice Han, Ed Reyes, and other council members. Today, I want to acknowledge the Aztec Fire Crew. We started with 150 people. Unfortunately, we only get 40 slots with the United States Forest Service, so we have to cut down, and this is the best of the 150 people that we started with. So I want to give you guys a hand. We have many women that in the past, they had difficult lives, like we said. The result of this is going to be the training that they receive. Hopefully, they make it to become a wildland firefighter, if not, city firefighter, county, or become productive in other ways, otherwise. I think the discipline and the structure that they're going to learn here, they're going to carry that through the rest of their lives. And I do work. Fortunately, I love what I do, work every day, and my hope is for these guys to get a second chance in life. A lot of times, we forget about that. We don't want to give them the opportunity, but the city has supported us very much on giving them a second chance. And just to say that in the next year, we are going to need some support, so don't forget about us. This year, we had to manage to buy the uniforms. I know that everything is changing, and monies are short, but hopefully, just keep us in mind. Special thanks to somebody that helped us very much to get up here today, and that person, I want to give a special shout out.
One, two, three. Billy Jean!
Billy Jean, she helped us. Give her a hand, too. She's great. Mitchell Pharoah has supported us very much. Ana Guerrero, all the whole council staff, they're great. And today, we're going to be at the Tom Bradley Room. It's a nice view out there. We really appreciate that opportunity to be out there today. Thank you very much. And I have three individuals that would like to come up and say a few words. Lepe?
Good morning. My name is Araceli Lepe. I'm very thankful this morning, most informal with God. I'm very appreciated for the opportunity, for all the fundraising that everyone helped. Also, I'm very appreciated with America, because, why? Because when I asked for help, there was always a reaching hand to help me and my family members, and I'm nothing without my fire crew. I love these guys. They're my inspiration. Thank you. Love, peace, harmony to the world, prosperity. Thank you.
Thanks. You don't have to lean in it.
How you guys doing? My name is Wallace Molina, and I have a lot of thanks to everybody in this crew, because, you know, I feel that this is my second chance in this community and fulfill something and help out everybody in this community, because I used to take, but now I'm giving, you know, and I thank God for that. And I think, I thank Arturo right here, Enrique, I'm sorry, I'm nervous. I thank Enrique, because without him actually doing this, I don't know where everybody else would be at. And I thank my crew, because without them, I wouldn't be pushing myself as hard as they do, you know, because we're sweating, you know, tears, and it looks like we're crying, but we're not. It's just sweat in our eyes, you know? But it's, I thank everybody here, and I thank my crew. I thank James, Kyle, everybody who's there with us in training, and thank you for this opportunity once again in life.
Thank you. 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 Hello, my name is Pedro Mata. I joined this crew, I'm a gang member, I was a gang member, and thanks to this crew, I got a new hope. I'm a ex-gang member now, and I got a career I'm looking into. I really enjoy this. I love these guys, and I want to thank everybody here for helping, making it possible. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you again. I would like to thank the staff of Aztec's Rising. They will not forgive me if I mention their names. The staff is great. We were under L.A. Bridges, and now we're going into working the grid zones 24/7. We're working. Thank you for all the council members that supported us, Jose Weisar, Tony Cardenas, and the agency is still going to be alive. This program itself was kind of left out, but hopefully, we can get some support next year to keep doing this. Thank you very much.
Stephanie's going to lead you back there. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next presentation, Mr. Weisar. Oh, I'm sorry, they had said you weren't ready. Are you ready now? I'm sorry. Mr. Weisar, we're going to go to Mr. Wesson, who had been, I guess, the next portion.
It's a pleasure to be here today to honor an organization, Sam Ho Tours. And when you think of a tour company, you just think of an operation that takes people various places, and they make money, this is what they do. Well, this is kind of what they do, but they do more than that. They believe that it's important to give back to their community. So what they've decided to do is every year, they service over or close to 1,000 senior citizens from the district that I represent, and they take them to places like Tibecula, Antelope Valley, San Diego, and other places, so that the seniors can enjoy themselves and have a good life. They feed them, they, for a day, the senior citizens are treated like the kings and queens that they are. The senior citizens are the ones that laid the blueprints that we have followed to become successful in our lives, and it's just my pleasure to have the president, owner, Mr. Shin here, who has decided to take that extra step, that extra mile, to provide seniors with a little more happiness. And one of the reasons why I truly appreciate what Mr. Shin does is because I'm blessed where I still have my mother with me, and if she is going everywhere, on this place and that place, so people that take... and that place, so people that take the time to give our seniors joy, to take them to happy places, I think we should take a moment just to say thank you. Mr. Shin, thank you. I'm gonna ask Mr. Shin if he would like to say a word or two?
Yeah, let me do it.
You come in, you do it.
Hi, my name is Kevin Lim, I'm Operation Director of the Sam Ho Tours, I would like to give a short speech instead of my boss, Mr. Shin, and Mr. Wesson, and then I'm a member of the Los Angeles City Councilors, this is a great honor for us and the Korean community as well. We are honored to be here, this is real honor to be here with such a great award. Last 15 years, we, Sam Ho Tours, was able to grow as big as today because of your concern and assistance. So far, we are trying to give more chances to give some citizens to the tour with us without anything, just let them make happy, because so far, your members and whole citizens give us a lot of chances to support them, to, we could grow, that we could support them. As a member of the citizens of Los Angeles, we will work harder than ever, than try to pay back to Los Angeles what the city has offered to our community and company. Once again, thank you very much for your big support, and thank you for all these honors, thank you very much.
If I could get a photograph with me presenting Mr. Shin with a certificate from the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Wesson, we'll now go to our last presentation, Mr. Weisert.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and it's my pleasure to be here today to recognize an individual that has left a legacy, not only for the whole, for the Boa Heights community, but also a legacy of family members who care deeply about what happens in the city of Los Angeles. It's my honor today to welcome the family members of the late Carlota Peraza, a woman who was loved dearly by not only her wonderful family, but also all those who she's ever met in her life. She was born in Sinaloa, Mexico, and served as both loving mother and father to her three children, she worked diligently to support her family and help them realize their dreams in coming to the United States to pursue the American dream. With the utmost determination, she worked fiercely to ensure her young son and daughters grew up to be successful and caring individuals. Many of us in this room may or may not know, but we have become fans of a restaurant in Boa Heights called La Paria. We taste the food at city events, we taste it when we go try to find authentic Mexican food, and today, I'll tell you a little bit about the history of that wonderful restaurant. Many years ago, in order to support her family, Carlota Peraza sold Mexican antojitos, such as delicious taquitos and quesadillas, on a small stand in front of her home. Knowing that many of her customers struggled to make ends meet, she often allowed her customers to open a tab with her until they were able to pay, sometimes a day later, sometimes a week later, and sometimes months later. It didn't matter to her, what mattered is that she took them at their word, and they would pay her back if and when they could. This mix of homestyle hospitality and delicious Mexican recipes continued when Carlota's daughter, Carmen Salas, opened up the first La Paria restaurant in Boa Heights 30 years later, and today, we can still enjoy the same delicious antojitos dishes that Carlota used to sell in front of her home at four different La Paria locations throughout the city of Los Angeles. Sadly, last year, we suffered a great loss when Carlota Peraza passed away, but we will forever be grateful for her strength, determination, and passion that have been passed on through her, to her family. So, ladies and gentlemen, it's my great honor to be here today to honor Carlota's life by today recognizing the legacy that she has left, not only in bringing up wonderful children, but leaving a wonderful legacy of the food, but also the compassion and dedication she had to her customers, which is customary in Mexican families when one visits somebody else's home. So, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, I would like to present this resolution, signed by the city council, our mayor, and our city attorney, and our city controller, to Carlota's daughter, Carmen, who's here with us today and continues to operate four wonderful restaurants throughout the city of Los Angeles, and thank you, because you not only provide this great service, but often in times of need, to organizations, to the community, you are there providing that help and support, no matter what it may be. Muchisimas gracias, Carmen, te queremos mucho, de parte de la ciudad, en respeto a tu mamá y todo lo que ha hecho por nosotros, usted es una familia que pensó muy linda como la de usted, muchisimas gracias por todo, gracias.
Thank you very much, council, a city council member, thank you very much, señor concejal, señor Weisert, ma'am, this is yours, your room, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weisert.
Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, before we take a public comment, we are gonna take up item number 19, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Madam President, on this matter, Mr. Cardenas is recusing himself.
And Madam President, there are belief cards on this item as well. Yes, Mr. Arnold Sachs, followed by Zuma Dog in the San Fernando Valley, and Phil Jonah John. Mr. Sachs?
Good morning, Arnold Sachs, the reconsideration and an increase for the purchase order of $250,000. A, why does the city continually fund the errors, the mis, I don't even know what word to use, because it's so out of the realm of reality, why is the city funding anything with the CRA? It's not a city agency. It says right here on item number nine, the city financial policies are not applicable to the CRA. It says in item number nine also, that the city can interpret certain CRA actions. What does interpret mean, is that a legal, is that a legal phrase? Why is the city funding not only the legal fees, but then the legal settlements? The CRA got funded for the Grand Avenue fiasco, the city got sued, the city settled on behalf of the CRA, when they changed the density, they got sued by the owner of the Bonaventure Hotel. The CRAs, there's been stories recently in the newspaper regarding the Grand Avenue Project Park, that needs to be, the design needs to be okayed by the county, by the city of L.A., and by the CRA. It's a third party, what is the story with paying for these fees? Who are they answerable to, and how do you justify the fee payment when you have such a budget deficit that you need to raise parking fees to pay for police? Why not use the money that you're gonna pay those criminals and pay it for police? Put the money to the police, every fee that you talk about being raised is for the police, but yet it goes out the back door to corrupt agencies like the CRA. Help the city for a change, do your job.
Thank you very much, we'll go out to the San Fernando Valley, Mr. Zuma Dog.
On American Top 40, I am Casey Kasem, and now we're up to the number one issue on Zuma Dog's radar that says is the biggest corrupt racket in the city, and now we're seeing evidence of it with this lawsuit payment, it's the way the city is handling the residential hotel affordable housing situation, they are commingling them, I'm here to tell you it is mutually exclusive, and I will make sure, my number one effort is to make sure I am in contact with Barack Obama and that he is aware of this situation. Here's what's happening, first of all, the city has to spend $400,000 litigation expenses over the way they've handled this situation of the Alexandria Residential Hotels. Mayor Antonio Vieragosa has come out and said, "We have added 20,000 affordable housing units online in the city." He will take those statistics to HUD, federal, Barack Obama, and say, "Now we get money for these 20,000 affordable housing units." I'm here to tell you, they are hotel units without kitchenettes, without individual gas meters, that are very expensive, a hotel unit in the city of Los Angeles, try to find one under $1,100 to $1,800. So, the mayor says, "You hotel owners, now these are residential units, they cannot be rented day to day," and now we're seeing this lawsuit, many more to come, and I hope Barack Obama is watching this meeting, and I will be making sure my words are heard. Antonio Vieragosa has said, "We have 20,000 affordable housing units added to the city." They are residential hotels, they are single hotel units, without gas meters, without overly priced, no kitchenettes, that's what he's calling affordable housing, HUD alert, HUD alert, Barack Obama, federal alert, investigate Vieragosa's housing scam. Zuma Dog.
Phil Jonah John, followed by Eddie Glass.
Morning, council members, boy, how do I top Zuma Dog? Why do I have to go after him? Just about this item 19, I just wanted to say that I just, I generally disagree in principle with government policies that interfere with the free market, I don't think the city should be interfering in the real estate market, shouldn't be buying property, selling property, this is socialism, and it doesn't work, I disagree with it, you know, this country is based on capitalism, you kill capitalism in this country, you're gonna kill this country. Don't agree with the city doing these things, that's all, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Glass, I'm sorry, Ms. Glass.
Honorable council members and members of the public, sorry, I just finished gobbling down the refreshments outside. Recently, my nonprofit organization submitted a proposal to provide services in a non-grid zone, we were not recommended for funding, and submitted an appeal that was heard on February 13, 2009, by the Oversight Committee. We decided to appeal to the next level, because our concerns were not fully addressed in the committee decision. March 4, 2009, I received an email at 6:30 p.m. from a city representative stating a committee hearing was scheduled the next morning at 10 a.m., and that my appeal could be heard for two minutes by filling out a speaker card. I will not detail the issues, because the appeals process for the RFP is complete. I'm here today as a private citizen to ask for a review of two important issues we raised, one, that the proposal review process is flawed, and two, the scoring is misleading.
Excuse me, Madam President, I don't believe she's talking about the Alexandria settlement.
No, the, am I?
It's not in public comments.
No, it's a general comment.
Okay.
Is that okay?
All right, we've already, please keep going, because since we already started, but go ahead.
Yes, I did indicate it was the grid, non-grid zone.
Okay.
All right, I received an appeals procedures letter stating, quote, "Organizations will have an opportunity to appeal to the full city council after the appeals process has concluded, there's no mention of attending a committee meeting and filling out a speaker card. I think the Oversight Committee has limited vision and operates with a biased predetermined ruling. I would like to know for future reference, how to appeal to the full city council as stated in the procedures, and also, aside from the fact we were not recommended for funding, how to have our issues heard." I think we're worthy of a public voice.
Thank you very much. Item 19 is now before us, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item number 19, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Thank you, we'll now go to public comment. I'll call the following individuals, Dr. Clyde Williams, followed by Richard Kearns, Lucille Caruso, and Oscar Johnson, and then I'll call the following four, thank you.
Public comments. My name is Clyde Williams, I live at 4115 Barrett Road, El Sereno, CD 14. Well, Santa Clarita is trying to help the L.A. city, they got $167,000 pork earmarks in the stimulus bill for the new Southwest Museum facility, where were the L.A. representatives? What were they afraid of? The new Southwest Museum facility, what is it? In fact, it is the west wing of the proposed new massive expansion of the Autry and Griffith Park. Why? Because John Gray reprimanded one of his representatives once, because they called it the Southwest Collection, rather than the Southwest Museum. Without the collection, the Southwest Museum in northeast L.A. will die. Why? Because the collection is the museum. Why does Autry want the collection? Because Autry knows that the only way that they can get federal grants, state grants, presence in the museum community is to have that collection. They will take the collection, or the best parts of the collection, from the Southwest Museum in northeast L.A., and they'll take it, loot it, pillage it, over to the Griffith Park. Why? Because they prefer Griffith Park and the golf course, rather than Arbury. Thank you.
Thank you, Clyde, Richard Kearns.
Hola, what a joy it is to be alive, to see another Nahuoz. Richard Kearns, poet activist, 5th District, I've given the clerk a copy of my prepared remarks, as well as an article about Eric Holder's second set of clarifying remarks, March 18, halting DEA raids on legitimate medical cannabis dispensaries. I stand before you today to advocate for all the many nested communities in which I am a stakeholder. I am a poet and journalist, an AIDS activist and long-term survivor, and a medical cannabis patient and advocate, a stakeholder in a nesting of neighborhoods, of communities. What are the larger issues and themes embedded in our work together saving lives by providing safe access to a scientifically verified, but still stigmatized folk remedy, in regulating a system of safeguarded access to a medicine and way of practicing medicine that can make livable and productive lives for more than 150,000 Los Angelinos, patient stakeholders? I believe that we are heading toward the establishment of what I would call MACNCs, I've talked about this idea before. The MAC part is medical cannabis, the NC part is neighborhood councils, metaphoric MACNCs, medical cannabis neighborhood councils. As with the literal neighborhood councils, it is a part of the stakeholder self-government movement, instead of components of live, work, and play, metaphoric stakeholders represented on MACNCs could include patients, caregivers, dispensary staffers, growers, transporters, and advocates, and interface with the community at large and within. I hope this has been two minutes of thought sauce to go with your hot sticky Nahuoz cinnamon buns this morning, and coffee, or maybe with your french fries at lunch. Next week, embryonic metaphoric MACcalves, chao down.
Thank you, Lucille Caruso, followed by Oscar Johnson, followed by Stephen Box, followed by Heiner Kiefer.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I mean, you see me here a lot of times talking about like women's rights and stuff, and I don't feel I should be here talking about this, I feel my back should have been covered, you know, and so, because then I would have to cover so many years of talking, because when I went to request the Women's Rights Handbook of your state, it's even dated 1998, and so, and when I look at my And so, when I look at my book, and I'm not from the state, so when I look at my '60s books, and you see a lot of things in Los Angeles following this format of a book, putting me back, that I can't even cover 40 years of being back... You know, when I came here in the '90s, I was able to get my job hit and get... But came 2003, I would have jobs presented to me, but I couldn't take them. Because either the SBA 1818 and the requirements to get funding and these write-offs and all this, and then I'd come here and try to explain... People would make fun of me when I would show, you know, I can't walk to train stations or, you know, take buses all over the place. I have some medical injuries. And then people make fun of me because my back with women's rights isn't covered anywhere. You know, I didn't come here to play character roles, to go be Jimmy Hoffa and go to, you know, the governor, you know, and talk about rights. I don't know how to straighten this out. I do not want to go back and live like this, or continue to live like this. And you see stuff like an overview of Los Angeles density bonus ordinance, and it just covers everything, not for women's rights, but, you know, I don't want to talk because I didn't, and I put my life in danger. I don't know how to fix it, but I'll figure it out. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson? Oscar Johnson? Okay. Stephen Box, followed by Heinrich Kiefer, Phyllis Doherty, and then Arnold Sacks.
Good morning. Stephen Box. I'd like to read a letter, if I could, in response to the city clerks certifying the results of the March 3 election, to the mayor and the city council, from Gary Tobin, president and CEO of the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce, William Luddy, legislative and political director of the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters, and Ron Kay as a spokesperson for the No on Measure B campaign and a founder of the Saving LA Project. The voters of Los Angeles have given the mayor and the city council, the DWP, business, labor, environmentalists, and neighborhood councils and ratepayers, the time to craft a solar plan that will work for all of us, not just some of us. The opposition to Measure B was never about whether to embrace the use of solar energy. It was about crafting and implementing a plan that works for everyone. It is clear from the certified results of the election that the voters and ratepayers of Los Angeles want more transparency and inclusion before a decision of such significance for the future of our community is made. We stand ready to begin working with you immediately. The use of solar energy is an important opportunity for our community, and with all of us working together, we can lay a foundation that is beneficial for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Heinrich?
Truth, transparency, and teamwork. My name is Heinrich Kiefer. I reside at 530 North Avenue, 53, in the Councilmatic District of Ed Reyes. I am the immediate past president of the Historic Highland Park Neighborhood Council. I am currently in my seventh year of public service in our neighborhood council, with our neighborhood council, and I'm happy to report that last night, the official election results were released. Measure B, the hotly contested and so-called solar energy and job creation program, was defeated. The people's voices were heard. The NC system, the neighborhood council system, that is, is beginning to work. I want to thank the councilmembers who supported planning and dialogue, those that stepped up at community meetings and said, "Let's talk about this." And I also want to ask that neighborhood councils, that the early warning system be recognized, and that when councilmembers put these various motions and things together, they consider getting them out to the neighborhood councils. The system is all about working together, and as a neighborhood council representative and one that led a charge against Measure B, I think we can do better. So let's work together. Steve, my associate, Stephen Box, just described the scenario of how we didn't work together, so let's begin to work together. I think we can do much better for the city of Los Angeles. Transparency with regard to the Southwest Museum is another issue. It's a very, very concern to many members of the Northeast, so I would encourage my colleagues to have that dialogue. I think I saw Councilmember Weisar and Councilmember Lebrunche actually having a dialogue over here, which was a good sign. When I spoke to the mayor recently at the budget rep delegate, he asked me to turn to my local councilmember, so, Councilmember Weisar, please, let's sit down and speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Phyllis Doherty, followed by Arnold Sacks, followed by Rebecca Shainbliss, then we'll go out to Zuma Dog.
Good morning, Phyllis Doherty, Animal Issues Movement. I'm here because of the suspension of the spay-neuter program, which threatens not only to fill our shelters, but also to fill our streets with packs of dogs that are during mating season, that are a danger to the entire city. What I'm more concerned about, though, is that Ed Boakes is being allowed to frame this issue as the fault of the council and his employees, rather than the real cause, which has been his negligence in managing this department. He's trying to distract you and the public from the real reason that the spay-neuter funding was not adequate. The basis for spay-neuter funding is licensing. If Ed Boakes had instituted an effective dog license program, by now enough dogs would be licensed to pay for several spay-neuter programs. Every year, you have asked him, indeed, you have instructed him, to start dog licensing, and every year, he has had an excuse, and he said he will start, usually in July. Three weeks ago, Boakes and Assistant General Manager Linda Barth, supported by two mayor's office deputies, pressured the commission to approve changing 29 municipal code sections, and tried to get the commission to give the general manager complete control over dog licensing, which has always been and must always be set by the council. Mr. Bickhardt of the mayor's office testified personally to try to influence them, but the commission refused, and we beg you never to turn this power over to Boakes and Barth, who have just once again demonstrated their very poor judgment in finances, as they did with Hooters for Neuters at Bull Academy, and the threat to lay off a third of the employees. Ed Boakes has mismanaged this department in many, many aspects. He gave no warning to the commission that the suspension was pending, and he gave no warning to the main community, nor to you, nor did he ask for help. Today, he's in here, all of a sudden, talking with everyone and interested in getting your support. But now, a lot has been destroyed, and some of the last trust in the department has been dissembled. I'll finish quickly. I just want to remind you that in the Daily News yesterday, Mr. Boakes compared himself to the captain of the Titanic, and to remind you that before Mr. Boakes got here, this department was not the Titanic.
Thank you, Phyllis. Arnold Sacks, Rebecca Shainbliss, Zuma Dog, then Phil Jennerjohn.
Yes, good morning, Arnold Sacks. Recently, one of the councilmembers took it upon themselves to rebut some complaints in the newspaper regarding the increase in the meter fees. And the letter stated that the fee increase was needed for funding for police and services. You got a garbage trash fee increase, $137 million, which is more than enough to get 1,000 police officers, or build a police force up to 1,000, and that, you need more money. $18 million, which will be raised by the fee increase. How much of the cost of enforcement for the parking department to check on the new time restraints is included in this fee increase? Or will the money generated just pay for the parking enforcement? It's ridiculous. You keep calling every time a fee increase is needed for the, oh, it's for the police. It's for duty and responsibility. It's for openness and transparency. What it means is we really need to get some new leadership in this city. We really, seriously need it. I'd also like to address your self-congratulatory commentary regarding Lawa last week, or, not last week, in the last meeting. They spent $41 million for an architectural firm to develop a plan for the expansion of Lawa. They have a gap, in case you aren't interested, the Green Line stops short of Lawa, LAX. According to the architectural plan, there is no taxiway for the new planes, like the A380 or the large bowings that'll be landing at LAX, to get to the gates at the midfield concourse. How will that be accomplished? How can you congratulate a commission...
Thank you very much, Mr. Sacks.
...for a $41 million contract?
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Our next speaker is Rebecca Shainbliss.
First, I wanted to thank the members of the city council that are working to restore the spay-and-neuter voucher program. Second, I wanted to ask the council to consider revoking the law, or making an amendment to the law, that is associated with funding provided, so that those in Los Angeles who cannot afford to spay and neuter past this fiscal year are not punished by the law.
Thank you. Go out to the San Fernando Valley. Zuma Dog?
Yes, I'm glad Madam President has joined me here, because I have some very sad and tragic news to report. One of our recent public comment speakers from downtown City Hall was stabbed at Venice Beach this week, and I'm here to say it's due to the city's policy at Venice Beach regarding performance spaces. And here's what happened. A federal judge, a federal judge instructed the city of Los Angeles, Mayor Antonio Vieragosa, "You need more performer spaces dispersed throughout the boardwalk." Well, we know the city has no regard for federal law, so they scaled back and said, "Hey, screw you, Charlie. We're only doing it right here, this space."
Please watch your language.
You can all compete with that. Thank you. So they scaled back against a federal judge's wishes. "Hey, shut down all the elevators at City Hall, except for one elevator car, and let's see, I'm sure we'll see some elbows, we'll see some problems." Now, you put that down at Venice Beach, yes, we ended up having stabbings over the competitive nature against the federal judge's wishes. Okay, and I'm here to say, Mayor Antonio Vieragosa wants to be mayor? He has destroyed the fabric and character of this city. We have let a rabid dog in a city hall. He's tore up all the furniture and pissed all over the floor, and I say he may not be allowed to advance. He's created an unfriendly business environment. Jobs are not coming back. You better get used to Weisar's presentation for that lady that was serving tacos. That's the future. Low income, overpopulation, no jobs. City council, you better cut your wasteful spending. If you need help finding out how I got the Dr. Deming plan, but let me tell you, at this point, the whole city knows about it. You're walking around like the emperor's new clothes. Don't think that you're not walking around the city of LA among your own people, where they are laughing at you like the emperor's new clothes. And I'm here to say, I don't need a meeting with the mayor about Venice Beach, because I know they're hustling right now to fix the problem.
Thank you. Phil Jennerjohn?
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Phil Jennerjohn. I was recently a candidate for mayor in the election. This is my first appearance at city council after the election. I wanted to talk about it a little bit. Antonio Vieragosa was re-elected, of course, very disappointing to me, and very disappointing to many members of the city. But he only got 55% of the vote, and it turned out that was only about 15% of registered voters. That literally means that only about 7% to 8% of the registered voters in the city really wanted him to be mayor again. He ran against nine other men who didn't have 10% of the money that he raised combined. He ran against nine other men that didn't have 10% of the name recognition that he had. So, this is actually kind of a warning to him, and a warning to the city council, that maybe you guys ought to change your policies in the way you guys react to your voting constituents. Some of you councilmembers got re-elected with less than 10,000 votes, and you were unopposed. I lost badly, I'm not going to deny it, but, you know, I'm young, it was my first campaign, I didn't have a lot of money. There were some victories along the way. There was a big victory. I was the youngest to get a major party endorsement, and that was great. And I helped to defeat Measure B, which I felt was a terrible, terrible idea. I want to thank Ron Kay and Jack Humphreaville for their leadership. You know, I'm willing to lose an election every time if I can save the city $3.6 billion. That's very important. And I intend to run for political office again next year. I'll probably go for Congress. Right now, I have a new job. I'm the spokesman for Westside Republicans. It's a new organization. Our chairman is Rob Pedersen, and the website is westsiderepublicans.com. I see some of you city councilmembers are on your laptops right now. We're on Facebook, if you want to join us. Our main campaign right now is fighting Proposition 1A. It's a tax raise. It is not a spending cap. It'll raise your taxes, sale tax, 1% higher, highest in the US. Double your car registration fees. It's terrible. It's regressive. Hurts the poorest the most. The Howard Jarvis Taxpayer Association is against it, and if they're against it, I should let you know that, you know, it's a bad idea. I also want to say I endorse Rabbi Shifrin for the state senate CD he's running for, State Senate 26. I'd like people to get out and vote. The election is Tuesday. It's a very small area, Hancock Park, Hollywood, Culver City, Inglewood, Crenshaw District. Please get out and vote for Rabbi Shifrin.
Thank you. Walter Bactel, followed by Michael Carrion, followed by Michael Huntsman?
I wanted to come in to say something, because we were visited yesterday by the President of the United States, and I was told, and I heard on the radio, something that he had to say about the Special Olympics. He likened his bowling score to no better than somebody in the Special Olympics. And I want to say I resent that statement, not just because of the fact that I'm a disabled person, and I've been living on disability for over 15 years now, but because of the insensitivity, and it reminded me of what the president of Mexico said a few years ago, a couple of years ago. He said that my people, meaning the people from Mexico, are willing to do jobs that not even the black people want to do.
Yeah.
And we all realized that was a terrible thing to say. He shouldn't have said something like that. This reminded me of that. And it also reminded me of something that Barack Obama said in late August and early September last year. After Sarah Perin, his opponent, and vice president opponent of the Republican Party, she said that, she likened herself to a bulldog, and she said that...
Excuse me, Madam President, this really isn't within the jurisdiction of the city, this electoral politics, the presidential race.
Hello?
We just need to stick to items that are within the purview of the city council.
Yeah, well, we were visited here by the president yesterday. He had something to say in our city. I think I have something to say, too. If he wants to come to our city and say something, I can say something as well.
For the record, he said that in the city of Burbank?
He was right over here, just west of downtown here, and we were going to stop the clock until these things are resolved first.
You have 10 more seconds. We'll add 10 more seconds onto your...
I was just going to say that he... You cut my mic off already.
Sam, give me 10 more seconds, so you can continue your remarks.
No, I just wanted to say that he, Sarah Perin likened herself to a bulldog. She said that the only difference between a soccer mom and a bulldog is that a soccer mom has lipstick. And Barack Obama said...
Do you want to finish yours?
We remember what he said.
Mr. Carrion?
Yes, my name is Mr. Carrion, and I also am concerned about why you guys want to continue to raise rates and continue to come to the taxpayers for money, but yet you don't get off those expensive leather chairs you're on to do the enforcement that you're supposed to be doing. We want to know why you got new meters, but yet the police department is parked 60-deep in the red, and you haven't done anything about it. Mr. Lebrunche so gracefully says he's going to do something, but, and I will address the city council, not Mr. Lebrunche, he's full of lip service. He stands up here every day, and he sits here, and he protects everybody, and he proudly backs everything that he says. Mr. Lebrunche is not going to...
Mr. Carrion, if you could do for the whole council, please.
I am. I'm telling you, the whole council, that Mr. Lebrunche is lip service. What part of that did you guys not understand when I first started speaking? The city attorney was there listening. He heard me say that, that's why he doesn't say anything.
Excuse me, Madam President, he can't speak about the actions... Excuse me, Madam President, he can speak about the actions of Councilmembers, but he has, he should do it in a more respectful manner.
The way you did, the way the City Councilmen addressed me as an asshole? Was that respectful?
But, sir, sir, we ask you to not use foul language here in the council. You've been warned.
Okay, I've been warned. Now, let me tell the City Council about the hypocrisy here. The City Council, I mean, the city attorney runs around calling people names, then he has the audacity to come here and tell us not to use the same language that he uses. What, where is this? Is this a circus? What are you guys going to do? Why don't you live up to the same standards that you put us up to? That's all we ask. Take the hypocrisy away from this City Council and stand up, put your pants on the way we do, and respect us the way you want respect. Quit coming up here and demanding respect, and then turn around and insult us. I feel degraded by that.
Michael Huntsman?
Good morning, and my name is Michael Hubman, and I'm a human rights and homeless rights activist, and today I'm speaking to you as a member of the Coalition for the Abolition of Safer Cities Initiative. The goal of our coalition is to end oppressive policing and selective enforcement that is being visited on the poor and homeless people who live in Skid Row, Los Angeles. The city government and the police call this activity Safer Cities Initiative. I call it socio-economic cleansing. I have been lobbying the Los Angeles City Government, promoting the human rights and homeless rights of the poor and homeless people of Skid Row, Los Angeles for over a year. So what's new? It's time to name the problem. What problem? The problem is the assault on the human and civil rights of the poor and homeless people of Skid Row, Los Angeles. What are the manifestations of this problem? Oppressive policing, selective enforcement, violence under cover of authority, taking of property without due process, using court supervision and questionable police practices to debase and humiliate poor and homeless people, using mean-spirited strategies to persecute and harass poor people who have nothing and have no place to go. Naming this gentrification effort, war on the, that is, a war on the poor and homeless people of Skid Row, Safer Cities Initiative, is a clear example of the Orwellian doublespeak. This hostile social policy deserves a place right up there with George Bush's Clear Skies Initiative. More later, and nice flowers.
Thank you. Nice to see you. When you go out to the San Fernando Valley for Mr. Matt Dowd, we'll come back. Cheryl Green, Pamela Van Courtland, and Edie Glass, 118 seconds left. Mr. Dowd.
Yeah, thank you. This is indeed the blackest day, the blackest week in the city of Los Angeles in the three, four years we've been coming here now. About Venice Beach, because a performer down there just stabbed another performer five times. He's in hospital now, right in the city of Los Angeles performer space that you created, Tom Labonge and his committee, and Bill Rosendahl. See, I got the, I got the, there's the jacket he was wearing, and there's all the blood. Now, this blood is on the hands of Tom Labonge and Bill Rosendahl now. You thought I was, you thought I was ugly before. You thought I, you thought it was a show? You got another thing coming. The complaint's already being prepared right now. There's seven plaintiffs already in this performer space, because this is what you did, City Council. You told all the musicians down the boardwalk with amplifiers. They all had to get up the other end, and you took away all of their spaces. You took away 12 blocks out of 17. So the guy who stabbed my, one of my best friends was a bass player with an amplifier, and he was a performer, and he had nowhere else to go. And they were arguing over this spot that you created, so that's exactly what you wanted, and now that you're going to have to pay for that. It's disgusting. And I don't give a fuck about Tom Labonge's etiquette or any of that bullshit, Dion O'Connor.
So, he's been warned previously, so we'll go to our next people. Cheryl Green?
Good morning. Thank you. I'm speaking on behalf of the spay and neuter coupon, the temporary cancellation of the program. I first wanted to thank Councilman Cardenas and the other Councilmembers that are bringing this back for a vote and reconsideration. Among other things, I do some volunteer work. I'm Executive Director for Cat Crossing. I've been doing it for 20 years, and I have handed out a very large number of discount coupons over those years, mostly for cats, probably in the thousands. And as you know, cats breed every three months during the summer months, which on an average of four to six kittens per litter is a lot of cats. The $30 coupon, as you know, covers only $30 of a $70 or $80 spay. Private groups cover the balance. Groups like Kitten Rescue, Actors and Others, private foundations will pick up the balance. So people that not necessarily qualify for the $70 Big Fix will be able to take advantage of the $30 city coupon and then be able to get help from the private groups to cover the balance. So what the city currently provides, or what they have been providing in addition to what we provide, is an integral part of assisting the city in lowering the problem of unwanted pets. And of course, with the wonderful and necessary and badly needed mandatory spay and neuter, we desperately need the program to enable the city and the groups to enable the city to carry this ordinance forward. I wanted to make a point, because I think something that's being missed in the cancellation of the program is that to impound an animal, cats or dogs, to house the animal, to medicate the animal, kill and render the animal costs the city, per animal, over $100. Now, you currently kill, unfortunately, over 40,000 animals a year. That's $4 million, unless my math is wrong. There's your money. There's all the money you need in order to fund the spay and neuter program. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. Pamela?
Good morning, Councilmembers and citizens. I would first of all like to thank Councilman Cardenas for his support of continuing the spay and neuter voucher program. I am founder and president of a 501(c)(3) nonprofit foundation for the general welfare of animals, pet animals and wildlife. We receive up to 10 phone calls a day at this time from citizens who are pet owners who are very, very concerned about complying with the spay and neuter law of the city of Los Angeles and with the health and safety of their pet animals. They may not be in the welfare category, but they can absolutely not afford the high veterinary prices of surgically altering their pets. Again, there is mounting concern among the citizens of Los Angeles City over complying with L.A. city laws to spay and neuter their pets. We need very desperately the spay and neuter voucher program reinstated. I would like to end with this. It costs more, as Cheryl Green just mentioned, for the city of Los Angeles to board, care for, and euthanize a dog and a cat in the shelters of Los Angeles City than to pay for neutering one. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Edie Glass? We don't have a way to do the second, so we'll just give you about 20 seconds, okay?
Thank you. Continuing, regarding the GRID RFP proposal and appeal process. For future reference, I'd like to know how to appeal to the full City Council as stated in the procedures, and also, aside from the fact we were not recommended for funding, because that's no longer in dispute, how to get a response to the concerns we raised. The appellate process is not working if it is designed to discourage an active public voice.
Thank you. That closes public comment. Madam Clerk, the next item?
Next item, Madam President, is item number 24, and that was called Special Four Cards.
Yes, Mr. Clyde Williams, followed by Arnold Sacks, followed by Zuma Dog.
Item 24. My name is Clyde Williams. I live at 4115 Barrett Road, El Sereno, CD 14. MTA representation. We in El Sereno oppose reducing L.A. city's representation on MTA. In fact, we would recommend perhaps raising it. Why? Bus 256, for the second year, we've tried to keep it in operation in northeast L.A. MTA wants to put it into Pasadena and Montebello. Montebello has fewer people than El Sereno. What's going on? We have to go to San Gabriel Valley Depot, the El Monte, in order to make our representation to MTA. We can't come downtown, which is a lot closer than going to El Sereno, going to El Monte. We kind of wonder why it's going on. They only give us one minute in the MTA meetings, and I say the representation there is not really representative of either the MTA's service population or especially the city of, city of Los Angeles and the district of El Sereno. Maybe this is payback to Santa Clarita for getting the Autry Museum $167,000 worth of federal stimulus so that they can move our collection to Griffith Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Arnold Sacks?
Yes, good afternoon, Arnold Sacks. MTA representation. Now, there's an oxymoron, if there ever was one. I don't unfortunately agree with the previous speaker. I believe Councilman Parks left his position on the MTA Board over three months ago, and the city of L.A. has yet to appoint a replacement. And now they're going to step to the plate and worry about representation? Who's replacing Councilman Parks? Why is it taking so long? And it may not be a bad idea to give the North County a voice in the MTA. They're always complaining about the fact that the city of L.A. is getting a mass, a massive amount or a great percentage of the funding that's going to be raised. Look at what they say about Pop R. Now, if they have a voice, then maybe they can have some transportation plans. Maybe somebody might consider somehow working legislation to make the I-14 a toll road, and they can collect all the fees and use it for North County transportation projects because they'd be the only ones basically using the I-14. Sounds like a really winning idea. Instead, they're going to go with this carpooling on the 110 and the 10 freeway to enable themselves to get federal funding. How much of that money you think is going to trickle down to the public? Again, I state, MTA representation? There's an oxymoron. It should go into the Hall of Fame, if there was a Hall of Fame for oxymorons. That would rank right up there near the top. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. We'll go out to the San Fernando Valley, Mr. Zuma Dog.
Yes, you know, this is hilarious. Let's just note how hilarious it is that Antonio Villar Gosa wants to be mayor. Here's what's happening, people. The Metro Board, okay, the MTA Board, they're basically saying they want to strip away the mayor's power because he's screwing up the whole region for everybody, and I'll read it to you. It said it would revise the competition, the composition of Metro by deleting one of the public members appointed by the mayor of Los Angeles, Antonio Villar Gosa, and replacing them with appointments from City Councils of Palmdale, Lancaster, Santa Clarita, thus eroding the current voting strength of Los Angeles. Here you have the entire region rising up against our mayor. They are saying this guy is so irresponsible, we want to kick him off the MTA Board. And I say, hey, I don't see any reason why they shouldn't. City Council, you better take a hold of the situation, grow a spine, and take back the city from a vindictive mayor.
That closes a comment on this item, item number 24. Yes, Mr. Smith.
The charges just heard. Assemblymember Knight is a very good friend of mine, former L.A. PD officer, Division Division. He introduced this to get power for the communities he represents, which is Lancaster, Palmdale, et cetera, not as a retribution against the mayor of Los Angeles or in any way the city of Los Angeles. He wants to empower his communities who have felt that they are not represented on MTA properly, not to get even with Los Angeles. I think the bill is misguided. If he wants to give them power, they should actually try and get an initial seat, not remove L.A.'s seat, and that would be the logical thing to do. But to just answer the charges, that is not what the bill is about.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And we did introduce this motion to just protect our numbers and representation, as you know, on the, on the MTA. With that, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the votes. 11 ayes. Thank you. Next item.
Next item, Madam President, is item number 25, and that was called special by Councilmember Weiss, and the substitute motion has been distributed. Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Madam President. Very briefly, colleagues, Assemblymember Ted Liu has an excellent bill in Hopper and Sacramento that I think we should go on record and support. A lot has been made over the past several years about the issue of DNA testing of rape kits, of sexual assault evidence. State law provides that after a sexual assault, if the evidence is tested within a period of two years, there is no statute of limitations on the prosecution of that crime. So if you get, if you get it tested in the database within two years. Assemblymember Liu asked a very sensible question, which is, why two years? Why is that, why is that a magic number? I think when the state law was passed initially, there was a little more apprehension, a little more unease maybe about DNA testing, but now that it is something that is so well-established, so well-understood, the Assemblymember thinks that that period should be extended to five years. So if you test the evidence within five years and you have it in the database, then you would never have the statute of limitations apply, which is a good thing. And Councilmember Buhl presented, and Councilmember Garcetti presented this motion with me. Asper and I vote.
Thank you. Very important, and we will move on that quickly. So, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the votes. 11 ayes. Thank you. Next item?
Next item's item 26, and that was called Special Four Cards, and there is an amending motion that has been distributed on 26A.
Thank you. Mr. Sacks? Followed by Mr. Carrion, and we'll go out to Zuma Dog.
Yes.
You have one minute remaining, sir.
Yes, I, no, thank you. I noticed on one of your special events is you're going to celebrate Aaron Hubbard's birthday, and so I would ask, some people consider the Scientologists a cult. Will you be in the future celebrating Jim Jones' birthday and David Koresh's birthday? They also both ran cults. Some people say they have to spend a lot of money getting their children deprogrammed from the message that Aaron Hubbard puts out, that the Scientologists, again, is a cult. At what point do you eliminate other cult fanatics from their celebrations? You're going to include them all? There's probably a list of maybe 100 people that have led cults throughout the years in, in pursuit of their own megalomania. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carrion?
Yes, once again, we're throwing money away. If you guys would cut down your salaries, maybe you guys could give some of this money to these special waiver fees. You have over, almost close to $40,000 today that you're giving away, and the other amount of money that you're subsidizing for a lot of these programs, which is going to be returned to the city. I'd like to know if somebody can answer me. When you put up all this money for all these special fees and it is reimbursed, is it reimbursed at an interest? How long does it take for these people to pay the city back? Months, years, decades? And do they get charged interest, or do they pay you a dollar a year? I don't know. Nobody's ever shown me how the reimbursement process works. Number two, you have one event there by our gracious Tom Labonge, once again, who has $20,000 for a race. Can somebody tell me-
Hold on one second, Mr. Box, I think we can hear you up here.
Hear me?
There's someone in the back. We can hear his conversation, so just keep going on, please.
Okay. So can somebody tell me why it costs $20,000 for a race? What is it that this money is spent for? Are you feeding these people steak and- Are you feeding these people steak and lobster so they can run up and down the street for a couple of blocks? $20,000 for one event is almost about the same amount you have for all 18 other events. But I guess Tom LaBange's way of doing business here means more to the rest of the city, and he gets to spend more money than the rest of the council does. Everybody's asking for 500 or 1,000. He's asking for 20,000. Well, guess when you're the spokesperson for the city, you can throw money away that way.
Go out to Mr. Zuma-Dog in the San Fernando Valley.
Yes, you know, this whole special event fee waiver just continues to tick along, the biggest waste of city money. Let me ask the taxpayers a question. Uncle Zuma-Dog's going to give you $5,000 to the city of Los Angeles. What would you like to do with it? Homeless services on Skid Row? Give it to the underprivileged kids of LAUSD for programs? How about keeping the parks and libraries open that we're thinking of cutting? Perhaps preventing from the city workers of being fired? I know it's 5,000, but conceptually it's 5,000. These are some of the places the money can go. Or how about this? If you ask Richard Alarcon and Tony Kardness, they are giving it to a March for Justice Street Festival. Forget the kids, forget the homeless, forget the hungry, forget the parks, forget the libraries, forget hiring the cops, forget everything. Let's have a March for Justice Street Festival, baby! That's what the city needs! We'll have to go on The Tonight Show with Jay Leno and talk about that. All right, now, $20,000 for a charity run walk, a celebrity run walk. If it's $20,000 for a charity run walk, I say just take the $20,000 and give it to the charity and have some of the celebrities kick in. All right, the Scientology thing that you're paying for, you know, with all due respect, you've got people like John Travolta and Tom Cruise that are part of this organization. How about if they can chip in and pick up the tab so that the little old ladies in the churches and the kids and the people that need the money? This is money that comes out of the general fund. They call it a special event fee waiver, but it doesn't get waived. It gets paid, and it's for things that we're talking about cutting, firing, closing. All hell's breaking loose out here, and you've got the city of Los Angeles having la di da festivals all over the place, and this is not what the money's supposed to be used for. They must be open to the public of community benefit. I see little of that. Get your act together, you bunch of clowns. People are laughing at you.
That closes public comment on that item. Madam Clerk, if you could open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the votes. Eleven ayes. Thank you. That item is approved. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
Their excuses on the desk. Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused Wednesday, March 25th, to leave at noon for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Smith moves. Ms. Zein seconds.
Councilmember Zein requests to be excused August 4th, 5th, 7th, 11th, 12th, and 14th for personal business, and also for Tuesday, July 14th, and Tuesday, April 24th, for city business, and those all meet council policy.
He will be excused and missed.
Councilmember Perry requests to be excused April 7th and 8th, and those are for city business. That meets council policy.
She'll be excused.
Councilmember Kardness requests to be excused Friday, April 24th, for city business. That meets council policy.
She'll be excused.
Councilmember LaBange requests to be excused Wednesday, April 1st, to leave at 11 o'clock for city business. Wednesday, July 8th, that's also for city business, and Tuesday, May 12th, to arrive at 11:00. That's for city business, and those all meet council policy.
She'll be excused.
Councilmember Gooel requests to be excused Friday, May 29th, for personal business. That meets council policy.
Thank you.
And also Friday, April 24th, for city business. That meets council policy.
Be excused.
And Councilmember Han requests to be excused Friday, May 22nd, for city business. That meets council policy.
She'll be excused.
And that closes this, Madam President.
Thank you. Do we have any announcements today, colleagues? Ms. Han.
Thank you. I want to announce, because it has been such a success out in Van Nuys, we are launching the new video conferencing pilot program in San Pedro, at the San Pedro City Hall. And just like Van Nuys, it gives people who, you know, are very far away from City Hall an opportunity to just go down the street and speak to us and voice their concerns on a number of issues. And this is really a way that we can hear all the time from residents all over the city of Los Angeles. So it will be starting March 25th, and it will be available on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays when we have our council meeting. So anyone in the Harbor area, instead of coming all the way down here to City Hall, can just go to the San Pedro City Hall, the municipal building there, and sign in, and you'll be able to get our ear on whatever it is that you want to tell us. Again, just like Van Nuys, we've had that, and it's been a very successful program, and I know we've all really, you know, heard what people feel about a variety of issues, and that's important in this government. So March 25th, the San Pedro Video Conferencing Pilot Program will launch, so have your voice heard on anything you want, as long as the city attorney allows it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Announcements? Adjourning motions? We have adjourning motions. We could ask everyone to please rise in the council chambers. Ms. Han.
Thank you. I want us to adjourn today in memory of Felix Durevic, who passed away on March 4th. Felix was born August 1st, 1934, in Romania, but he grew up in Split, Croatia, and immigrated to America in 1956 where he settled in San Pedro. He had a 20-year career with Genesco, S.H. Crescent Company, and he, that profession took his family to Oregon, Hawaii, Northern California, but ultimately he came back to his beloved San Pedro where he started his own successful retail business. Felix was such a devoted family man and a pillar of the Croatian community in San Pedro. He was dedicated to his Croatian heritage, and he served as special advisor to the Consul General of the Republic of Croatia. He was a true believer in freedom and was very active in promoting the cause of Croatian independence. He served as the president of the Croatian-American Club for many years, and he was one of the founders of the Los Angeles Split Sister Cities Program. He, his life revolved around his family and friends, his devotion to his faith, and the bettering of America and Croatia's future. He was a dedicated parishioner at Mary Star of the Sea Church. Felix was this very tall and imposing man. I mean, when you walked in the room, you always knew if Felix was there, and when he talked to you, he had this very, very deep voice, but I never knew a man that was so gentle and just such a dear-hearted man. And I know that his wife Darlene, who is surviving him, they've been married for 45 years, will really miss him, and I'm sure she can't imagine her life without him. He's also survived by his children Angela, Jerry, Jackie, and Carla, his eight precious grandchildren, his brother Nino, many cousins, nieces, nephews, and cherished friends. He will be missed by all, but I know personally I will miss Felix. He was a great gentleman.
Thank you. Mr. Alarcon.
Many of you know Bob Wynn on my staff. His mother passed away just recently. Bob is a community activist, particularly in the African-American community, and used to work for the Retail Clerks Union, and has been a tremendous addition to my staff, particularly with regard to helping to work with the African-American churches in my district and the African-American community in general. Well, his mother, Josephine Chisholm, was born in Sawyerville, Alabama, on December 3rd, 1928, to the late Jack and Irene Connor. She was the seventh of nine children. She accepted Christ at an early age and was baptized at the New Hope Baptist Church of Sawyerville, Alabama, and moved to Pacoima in 1962 with her husband and five of her six children. There she joined St. Paul Baptist Church of Pacoima under the pastoral leadership of the late pastor L.L. Jackson, and she served as a member of the choir and as the choir president. She also served as a deaconess for several years. Josephine worked as a licensed vocational nurse for several years while she and Willie raised their children, first in Pacoima, then in Lake Buteras. After she left nursing, she worked for and eventually retired from the Los Angeles School Board. She loved playing bidwist and shouting "Boston," and my staff asked me if I knew what that was, and I said that I knew very well because I was always the guy that was going for the "Boston." So Josephine enjoyed many days of playing bidwist and shouting "Boston." She was a great friend and mother to more than her six biological children. When children came to her house, they always left calling her Ma and Willie Dad. Of her nine siblings, Josephine was the last surviving sibling. Her husband Willie Chisholm, senior, and son Willie Chisholm Jr. preceded her in passing. But I would like to say a little bit about Bob, even though this is about his mother. I think you get a sense of the mother by looking at the son. Now, Bob was in Selma, Alabama, when the dogs attacked a crowd many years ago. His name, in fact, is instilled on a bridge with about over 100 people that were attacked by dogs in Alabama when fighting for their civil rights. When my mother lost her job at a grocery store, it was Bob Wynn who fought to get her job back, and it took a year, but it was a very trying time during my high school years, and my mother did get her job back because of Bob Wynn. And I know that those values that he fought to work for his community and fight for his community were instilled because of his mother, Josephine, who he admired until her death. She, he is actually celebrating her death because she lived a very fruitful life, and we send our condolences to Bob, his wife, and of course, her other children. She is survived by her daughter Renee Chisholm of Fillmore, her four sons, Deacon Robert Wynn, as I mentioned, and Minnie, his wife, Cornelius Chisholm and his wife, Joyce Chisholm of Palmdale, Larry Chisholm and his wife Denise Chisholm of Valley Village, Harold V. Chisholm of Silmar, 16 grandchildren, 31 great-grandchildren, and a host of nieces and nephews, grandchildren, and friends. The memorial services will be held this Saturday, March 21st, 2009, at 9:00 a.m. at Calvary Baptist Church in Pacoima. That's at 12928 Bond Street in San Fernando. I think it's Pacoima, but some people say San Fernando. And I should mention that her remains will be buried in Alabama, where the family has property, and she will be buried next to her sister.
Thank you. Second, Mr. Kardness. Mr. Wee, sir. Could you have a?
Yes, Madam President. Thank you. Thank you very much. Colleagues, we recently lost someone near and dear to council District 14 in Boyle Heights and certainly near and dear to all of Los Angeles. I'm deeply saddened yet to ask that we adjourn today in the memory of Ramona Garcia Coronado, an actress, singer, and activist from the Boyle Heights community who truly lived life to the fullest. She was born on October 9th, 1904, in Jalisco, Mexico. She was an outstanding and remarkable human being. Many considered her the oldest Mexican-American actress. She appeared on Spanish-language television and will forever be immortalized as the singing lady in the 2002 film Real Women Have Curves, written by Josefina Lopez, also a Boyle Heights resident. Doña Garcia Coronado was part of the annual September 16th Mexican Independence Parade in Mexico, televised throughout the world. It was through this experience that she shook hands with then-Mexican President Vicente Fox, that something she never forgot. Even when she was in her hundreds, Doña Garcia Coronado was featured on television exercising, singing, and reading to children on the Spanish-language program, Viva la Familia. She also sang with local mariachis and was appropriately known as the Queen of Los Mariachis of Boyle Heights. Although Garcia Coronado was probably best known for her film and television appearances, she was an active resident of the Boyle Heights community. She was a member of the Abuelitos, Los Abuelitos of Boyle Heights, a nonprofit organization that promotes U.S. citizenship, education, and quality of life improvements for seniors and immigrants. The director of the organization called Doña Garcia Coronado "The Queen of Los Abuelitos of Boyle Heights" because she was such a committed proponent of the group's mission. As a lifelong resident of Boyle Heights, I had heard many stories about this local legend, and I had the great privilege of meeting her when I became a council member. She has credited her long life to her strong religious convictions, a healthy diet, and a deep love for her community. She will be featured in a book about centenarians and youth, which will be released later this year. She passed away at the age of 104 on March 7th, 2009, in her home in Boyle Heights. As you've just heard, she was a queen of many things, and to the people of Boyle Heights, she was true royalty. And any of you have seen her. She was a little lady with a lot of spirit and spunk and energy with a tremendous voice, and many of us are going to miss her. She was something, a mainstay in Boyle Heights and someone who just showed that with happiness, good spirit, and love for others, we could all live a very long life. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to ask J.M. Perry to join me in requesting this council adjourn in memory of Altavice Davis, the widow of Sammy Davis Jr., who died March 14th, 2009, at Cedar Sinai Medical Center. She was only 65 years of age. At the time of her death, she was surrounded by family members and her son Manny Davis. She was born in 1943, grew up in Brooklyn, attended New York High School Performing Arts, trained as an actor and dancer. She met the legendary showman Sammy Davis in the mid-'60s when both were appearing on Broadway. He was in the musical lead of Golden Boy, and she was in the chorus line of High Spirits. She successfully auditioned and went to London with the Golden Boy play. She also, they were married in 1970 and were together over 20 years. During that time, they adopted a son in 1989. After they were married, she became active in several organizations, one of which is a very local share organization, which is a nonprofit group that raises money for developmentally disabled, abused, and neglected children. And she also helped organize a musical touring show of Mr. Bojangles, the ultimate entertainer, in 2006. She was also an occasional guest appearance on TV shows of Chips, Charlie Angels, and Minor Rose, and movie Can't Stop the Music in 1980. She is survived by her son Manny.
Thank you. Ms. Perry.
I wanted to second that motion. Ms. Davis was our keynote speaker last year at my senior celebrating life celebration, and there's a room full of seniors, about 1,500 of them, and they were absolutely thrilled that she came and she spoke, and, you know, she was just patient and gracious and told them all sorts of stories about being married to Sammy Davis Jr. and about her own career, and she was certainly an inspiration to all those who attended, and so it was really quite shocking that she passed away as she did, as she was so fit and just so wonderful. It's a big loss. I also have an adjourning motion. In memory of Marilyn Virginia, who passed peacefully on March 19th, 2009. Marilyn Virginia was born on August 27th, 1926, in Boston, Massachusetts, to Samuel and Pearl Hicks. She received her formal education in Brooklyn, New York, and married James Everett in 1946, and they had two sons, Jeffrey and James Everett Jr. In 1960, she moved to Los Angeles and joined Nativity Catholic Church in the 9th District and remained a member until her passing. She settled in the South Los Angeles neighborhood of Vermont Square at 54th and Vermont Avenue, where she lived for over 40 years. She was known for her dedication to children and need, and she became a foster mother, eventually adopting one of her foster children, Freddie Galvane, who she raised and supported. She was a hero to her family, a compassionate friend, and a generous contributor to the community. Her funeral services were held this past Tuesday, March 17th, at her home church of Nativity Catholic Church, and I want to join her friends and family in paying tribute to the life and legacy of this great lady.
Thank you. Mr. Zein.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm joined by the family. We're adjourning in memory of Mrs. Sharon Rose. We're joined by her husband, Richard, her sister Suzanne, her brother-in-law, Alan, and niece Ariel. They're with me, joining me for the adjourning motion. Sharon Rose was a passionate educator. She worked for almost 20 years at Woodlake Elementary School and was a very active member of the entire El Camino High School complex, including often spearheading the Melody of Words, a landmark event showcasing reading and authors. She worked on grants for the arts, for school beautification, for a distinguished school status. She worked long hours. She was on over 30 committees at Woodlake, as well as her other commitments in the community. She was most active in the San Fernando Valley Reading Council and the state reading councils. She was most active in the San Fernando Valley Reading Council and the state reading councils. She was awarded Teacher of the Year by the California Reading Council. She was the kind of teacher who is the voice of her school. She was called the matriarch of Woodlake for her mentoring of students, parents, and other teachers and staff. Most of all, she was an amazing teacher, as any of the students who were lucky enough to have her in the class will tell you. She taught reading and math, but she also found a unique ability in each of her students and taught them how to approach life. She was a dedicated teacher. She worked until she could not stand anymore. She was enthusiastic on her last day as she was on her first day as a teacher. She attended Queens College, CSUN, and got her teaching degree from California Lutheran University. Survived by her beloved husband, Richard, her daughter Rebecca, son-in-law, Andrew, sister Suzanne, brother-in-law, Alan, niece Ariel, and the Woodlake community. May she rest in peace, Ms. Sharon Rose. And I have one more adjourning motion. Cydel Morrison. Cydel Morrison passed away March 10 at the Los Angeles Jewish Home, where she had been a resident since 2003, loving mother of Amy. Revins Kraft, longtime member of the executive support group of the Los Angeles Jewish Home, a son of Mark Morrison, loving grandmother of Shayna and Talia. As advocate for the home's residents concerned, Cydel served as a resident council president. She was a friend to the executive support group, often sharing her experiences and appreciation for her home. Life after many executive events, she would be missed by all, survived by her daughter Amy, son Mark, and granddaughters. May she rest in peace. Cydel Morrison.
Thank you. Mr. Zion. Mr. Cardness.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make an announcement. Okay, thank you very much. The Self-Defense Workshop is going to be happening tomorrow at Fernangulous Rec. Center in Sun Valley at 8851 Laurel Canyon Boulevard. It's free from 11:00 to 1:00 PM. We've had successful workshops where as many as 300 people have shown up, about 98% of them women. It's not only for women, but the men that show up, you will get flipped over by women that are under 100 pounds, I promise you. I've seen it with my own eyes. It's a wonderful workshop to teach people the awareness of self-defense and not to put yourself in a situation where you end up having to, you know, fend yourself, fend off an attacker. Again, it's at Fernangulous Rec. Center at 8851 Laurel Canyon Boulevard in Sun Valley. It's free to everyone who comes, and it's from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM on Saturday, tomorrow, the 21st of March. And also, I just have to say that this was inspired by a young lady who worked for me who was attacked in her vehicle. She jumped out of her vehicle to get away from her attacker as the car was moving. Thank God, she only suffered some scrapes and bruises, and when she, after a few days, we were talking, I said, what can I do to help? She said, we need to get women not to be in that situation, and that's what inspired these workshops. We do several a year, and again, it's for people to learn how to have awareness so that they hopefully will not be in a situation where they have to fight off an attacker. Thank you very much.
Mr. LeBange.
Thank you very much. Very important, Madam. Mr. Cardness, thank you. I also want to remind everybody, today's the first day of spring. Spring is here, and get out and take a hike at any of the public parks throughout the city, especially Griffith Park, which has recovered quite well. We have a hike tonight at 4:30. The public's invited from the Charlie Turner Trailhead in the Observatory. Spring, but it means that the sun and the moon are on the absolute time. It's not like the solstice, Ms. Hahn, where the sun rises over the San Gabriel's and then sets in the north end of the valley like it does during the winter. But that's for another time. For a full show on Channel 35 and astronomy, check with me then. Thank you very much, members.
Thank you, Mr. LeBange. Welcome back to everyone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. This meeting's now adjourned. Thank you. See you all next Tuesday.